Okay. We will call to order this February 26th work session of the Board of Trustees. And we don't have our clerk here yet. She's driving back from Sacramento, so our Vice President will call the roll. Thank you.
Jacqueline Calvert.
Present.
Andrew Cottrell.
Here.
Katie Simon-Holland.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ellen Minetto.
Here.
I'm here. And Dr. Taylor is on her way, so we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Let's have Samantha Fredrickson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, if you would, Sam.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Fredrickson. Okay. First up, we have public comment. J.J., would you call the public comment?
Karen Surink.
Welcome, Ms. Surink. And we just want to remind everyone, you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Karen Surink, and I am a parent of three students who receive gifted and talented services. I want to start by saying how grateful I am that this program exists. From the time our eldest started in SWAS almost seven years ago, we have seen this program impact our children in many positive ways. We appreciate the rigor and challenge presented to our students, that they can learn at a pace that is appropriate for them, so they are not getting bored, that they are surrounded by like-minded peers, and can build friendships with people that they can relate to, and that they have teachers who understand the complex social and emotional needs of gifted students. We also appreciate how well the teachers in this program know our children as individuals. They have a keen sense of what makes them tick, how to motivate them, and even when to call me and check in to see that everything is okay. The program is a gift to our family, to hundreds of families in this district, and truly to the entire community as it draws professionals who want the best for their children from areas outside of Nevada to Reno. Many believe that our gifted programs are an unnecessary expense. Please understand, this could not be further from the truth. For gifted students, they are an instructional necessity. There is research to prove that a large number of high school dropouts are gifted, with some estimates as high as 20 percent. If these kids are so smart, why are they dropping out? They're dropping out because they're bored, unengaged, and out of place in general ed classrooms. Surely, our district does not want to lose our brightest students to boredom. At the very least, we need them in order to keep our graduation rates rising. Our gifted and talented education program is internationally recognized, and as Mrs. Byersdorf commented last week, the crown jewel of our school district. Who in their right mind would consider scrapping this program? Please do your very best to continue to prioritize our fantastic gifted and talented program.
Julian Surink.
My name is Julian Surink, and I'm a fifth grader in the School Within a School program at Huntsberger Elementary. I'm really happy to be in a SWAS classroom because I enjoy project-based learning. I like that we don't do busy work and collaborate with groups on big projects. When I work with these projects, I'm able to learn a lot more. The benefits of project-based learning have been proven many times over. My teacher is trained on how to teach gifted students. She knows how to keep us challenged and engaged. We have meaningful assignments. This is a great program, and I know that I am very lucky to learn this way. But instead of offering this to more students, the summary of reduction options proposes to cutting more than half of the current SWAS magnet and GT institutes. Hundreds of students would lose out on gifted education. If I were to lose GT, the GT lottery, I'd be placed back in a gen ed classroom. I'd be working on math, two or three grade levels behind where I'm currently working. Can you imagine how boring and frustrating that would be? On top of that, once I finish my work, my teacher would likely assign me to tutor students who were struggling rather than find more appropriate work for me. It wouldn't be that teacher's fault. It's just really difficult to teach such a wide range of abilities all at once. Gifted education allows me to learn at an accelerated pace in a way that works for me. Please remember that 20 points above a normal cognitive score is just as special as 20 points below a normal cognitive score. If you think slashing other specialized programs would be unacceptable, then refusing to fund gifted and talented programs is equally unacceptable. I'm counting on you to do the right thing.
Thank you, Julian. Very well said. Good morning. Is it Avery?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, Avery.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Avery Surink, and I am a seventh grade student in the Magnet Program at Pine Middle School. I have been receiving GT services since the second grade. From second to fourth grade, I was in the itinerant program, pull-out GT program. This was good because it allowed me an enrichment class once a week. However, the class was only, class only made up 10 percent of my total learning time at school, and on top of being not challenged the other 90 percent of the time, I often had to stay in for lunch and recess to catch up on work that I missed while I was in my GT class. I was so happy when I was accepted into the SWAS program in fifth grade. It meant that I could be in a full, GT classroom full-time. This was so much more appropriate for me, and I enjoyed spending time with student, an entire day with students I could relate with. The proposed cuts to the GT gifted and talented program would be disastrous for students like me. According to the summary of reduction options, you are looking at cutting the most beneficial parts of the GT program. If you must cut something in GT, and I am certainly not endorsing any cuts to the GT program, but if you need to sacrifice something, let it be the itinerant programs where students do not receive, receive full-time services. In addition, please consider expanding the GEMS model to all elementary and middle schools and allow high-achieving students to participate in full-time gifted education systems, similar to the current advanced academic placement model. This should not result in increased expense for the district, as all students need to be taught somewhere, and we have several GT-endorsed teachers in regular ed classrooms already. This model would allow more students to be exposed to a challenging and rigorous learning experience. Research shows that almost all students can benefit from this model, not just those in the top 99th percentile. Please allow more students to reach a higher potential. We know that if you give them a chance, they will succeed. Let's re-submar for everyone.
Thank you, Avery. Well done. Good morning, Teagan. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Teagan Surink. I'm a freshman at Tumonti Ranch High School. I've been in the Gate program for many years, since I started SWAS, School Within a School, in third grade. I spent my middle school years in the Magnet program at Pine Middle School, and now I'm here with multitudes of wonderful opportunities spreading out before me as far as the eye can see. Thanks to the Gate math education I received, if I wanted to, I could take all the courses required to earn a minor in math before even leaving high school. I could finish a rough draft of a lab write-up before my chemistry teacher is even done explaining the method. I could hold my own in a math class primarily populated by juniors and seniors. I could write an essay in MLA format with insect citations and a works cited page. No sweat. These are just some of the many valuable skills that I have learned while enrolled in the SWAS and Magnet programs. No words can fully do justice to these programs and all that they do for gifted kids. They challenge us and make us take an interest in our education. They require us to work hard in order to maintain good grades, thus teaching us the good work ethic that we never needed in general education classes. They teach us lessons that no one would think to talk about in regular classes, lessons such as, "It's okay if your work is not perfect. It's okay not to be gifted in everything, and that failure is an important part of learning." These programs allow gifted students to think deeper, learn at a faster pace, and let us feel included among other gifted peers. They create us an environment that allows gifted students to thrive, and I want to thank you for all the support you have given them. These programs are truly the crown jewel of the Washoe County School District. But with these budget cuts, it seems like you're shattering your crown jewel, not polishing it. Reducing the amount of SWAS and Magnet schools and completely getting rid of the Gate Institute at HUG will lay waste to the wonderful GT learning environment that teachers, parents, and you have worked so hard to create for students. When I learned about the proposed budget cuts, I wept, not for myself, but for all the brilliant young students who won't be able to be challenged like I was, for those excited little second graders who found out they'd be in SWAS next year, whose dreams will be squashed if the SWAS program at their school closes, for the students like me whose aspirations to be valedictorian will go down the drain if the Gate Institute at HUG closes and leaves them with busy work assignments that they don't see the point in doing, for the gifted students that will never get the opportunity to learn at their own pace if they can't get bussing to the SWAS school on the other side of town, for the gifted kids all across the school district who will be forced back into general education, given classwork that leaves them bored to tears and singled out by their peers if this budget cut is passed. They will be alone in a world that is not meant for them without the means to navigate it effectively. I know you are faced with a lot of tough choices right now. Please make cutting gifted education your last resort.
Thank you, Teagan. Well done.
Todd Colgrove.
Good morning, Mr. Colgrove.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's an honor to be able to address you this morning. I'm the Administrator of the Nevada State Library Archives and Public Records. The proposed cuts to the libraries across the school district only came to my attention yesterday afternoon, so please forgive me if I haven't had the chance to thoroughly prepare my comments as well as those that have gone ahead. I only want to make sure that it's on the board's radar that the Nevada State Library and Archives stewards significant resources that it makes available to schools throughout the state, between a half million to a million dollars' worth of resources, that is predicated on the school library meeting the definition of what it means, basically minimum library standards. When I read in the proposed cuts, the elimination of a number of certified high school librarians and so on, I immediately, my warning bells are going off saying, "Please, can we work with you to try to figure out how we can thread the needle?" Because, in my opinion, and in that of my colleagues, libraries equals education. It's difficult to imagine effectively providing that education that we all try to provide without the benefit of some of these resources that are a step beyond Google and just finding what's on the Internet. So again, I just want to reinforce that we're certainly more than available to be of service. If I can answer any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here.
Debbie Stowes.
Good morning, Ms., is it Stos?
Steers.
Steers.
Yep, Debbie Steers, Collection Development Manager of Washoe County Library System. So I come to you as a colleague of library services, but also as a parent. My son Liam spoke a few weeks ago about the impact of his high school library services has had on his education, and also as a former ESP elementary school librarian with your district. When I came to Reno seven years ago, my first job was working for a year and a half as an elementary school librarian. I came to that job with 15 years' experience in public and academic libraries and a Master's of Library Science, and it's only now that I see what a teacher librarian in the high school does that I can tell you I am incredibly humbled and a little bit horrified at what I brought to the classroom environment. These certified teachers are teachers. They have been trained in classroom management and pedagogy and instructional techniques. ESPs have not had that training. I don't want to disparage our ESPs. We have wonderfully talented, dedicated folks who are serving our students all across our building. But let me stress, those services are not the same. To be a member of the teaching faculty, to have a seat at that table where curriculum and instruction is discussed, to be a partner at that level in education, does not happen at the ESP level. To remove these positions from middle school and high school libraries would have a devastating impact. I also want to address a much smaller item that's being discussed, and I can almost guarantee I'm the only person who will ever bring this up, but in my role as Collection Development Manager with the county library system, I am responsible for the organization and access of all of our items. One of the items proposed to be cut is your Destiny Library Catalog. I just ask you to think of the tens of thousands of items you have throughout all of your buildings and what happens if you lose access. I think most of us learned to use libraries in the day of library catalogs. As we know, those don't exist anymore. If you cancel your subscription to Destiny, you lose access. You lose the ability to know what you have in your collection, the ability to help students and teachers find those materials, and also the ability to know who has them out and when they're due. Only, only a very small percentage of us think of those kinds of details, but in terms of the amount of resources we poured into building those collections, they're at great loss for going away if we don't maintain that organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steers, and thank you for your service to our students and through the library.
Michelle Hope.
Good morning. Welcome, Ms. Hope.
Good morning. I'm a parent. My children have participated in all of the Gate programs, pull-out, SWAS, Magnet, and are currently in, at the Gate Institute. And the only reason they are in public school is because of the Gate program. They were in charter schools. What I am concerned about when I look at the summary of reduction options is that I attended one of the Pine Middle School Budget Forum, and one of the ideas our group had, because our group had a bunch of the Gate students in it, was that, why would you get rid of your most successful gifted programs, SWAS, Magnet, and Gate Institute? They all agreed that the pull-out and push-in program were the least critical based on the programs that had been in, and they had all been in them. And so we recommended that we look at cutting the pull-out program because we understand that cuts need to be made. When I announced that at the meeting, both students and parents clapped, so there were people that agreed, and yet I don't see it on this list, and so I don't know why. So that is a huge concern of mine. Students, teachers, and parents agree that the pull-out could go for now. It's helpful, but it's not as helpful as the other programs. Also, I wanted to mention that reducing the location increases your transportation issues. It would really be better to have more locations at some point. Because of this program, you have high school students at the Gate Institute who have applied to West Point, MIT, Polytech, and Yale, and I know for a fact that three of those students have interviewed with MIT. Because of this program, we have had a group of students every year who have run out of math courses and have been able to go on to TMCC and then UNR to complete their math and science courses. It has been super helpful. I do understand that cuts need to be made. So again, if we have to lose something, the pull-out program, the academic Olympics, although everyone loves it, is not a necessity. Unfortunately, the gifted and talented advisory position is what has enabled the students to go to TMCC and UNR, but I think that if we had to lose something, we could lose the SWAS transportation. Again, none of this is ideal, but I want to recognize the position that we are in and say that if we have to lose something for now, these are the things that we would be willing to lose to participate in the budget problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the suggestions. We appreciate that very much.
Jeff Scott.
Good morning, Jeff. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. My name is Jeff Scott, and I'm here today as the Washoe County Library Director and the President of Nevada Library Association. I'm running to oppose funding cuts to Washoe County School District libraries. The Washoe County School District proposal would cut the librarian budget in half, cutting over $2 million and eliminating certified librarian positions at each school, eliminating 11 certified librarians at our high schools, eliminating 16 certified librarians at our middle schools, eliminating five certified librarians at our elementary schools. Thirty-two librarian positions are slated to be eliminated. Meanwhile, there is current legislation being discussed at the Nevada State Legislature. This legislature, another legislation that passed, would mandate Washoe County School District to maintain a new level of service for every school. If the Washoe County School District makes these cuts, they may be forced to rehire these positions in the next fiscal year. Furthermore, bills like SB 191 would establish school library standards that Washoe County School District must adopt. This may make this entire exercise a futile effort by the school board. Washoe County Library System relies heavily on these librarians as contacts with the local schools. Without them, our service to the school district would diminish, compounding this problem. Library services for students would decline rapidly and hurt their educational progress. It would hurt their future work potential as well. We've worked so hard to get to this point, it would be devastating for it to fall backward. It takes tremendous amount of work to maintain school libraries. This work cannot be passed off to untrained staff or students. A collection must support the curriculum. It cannot continue to do so without trained staff. Furthermore, state legislation would establish higher standards that the school district must adhere to. Students need multiple models to support their reading habits. It is not easy to get students to complete their assigned reading or develop a love of reading. Most critically, this development of a love of reading will serve students their entire lives. It will make them better prepared for tomorrow's workforce. School librarians are creating digital citizens. While books and reading will always be an important core component of libraries, developing digital literacy is an increasingly critical service. I see students learning to create apps, learning to code, and building skills outside of the traditional classroom. And taking away school librarians, you're taking away this opportunity for students to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is Amber here? Okay. Is this Amber? Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for bringing your guest.
Came here on a little bit of a whim. I'm Amber Pembleton. I'm actually new to the school district. I just came to speak about the gifted and talented funding. I don't actually have a child in the gifted and talented program, but my child's teacher has recommended that she be in the gifted and talented program. I just wanted to say that I did the gifted and talented program many, many years ago, and it was the best part of my school career, and so reducing the funding to where it's going to be a lottery choice and some students won't be able to do it, I think, is a mistake. When I was in school, my teachers, even though I always knew the answers to everything, they wouldn't ever call on me because they knew I knew the answers to everything, and I was bored out of my mind all the time. But when I got to do the gifted and talented program and I went to another school with all the other kids in my school district, it was just such a wonderful opportunity to be able to problem-solve and do complex things that I just never would have been able to do in the regular classroom. Because we are, you know, in the regular classroom, you know, we're just with everyone else, and yes, it can help elevate everyone else, but it can also bring you down a little bit. So I just feel like that was the most important part of my school career, and it really gave me a leaping pad to jump into things that I was interested in and just, yeah, I think that's about all I have to say, so.
All right. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
That's a pretty sweet baby, too. Oh, we have another.
Elizabeth Zartsky.
Zaretzky.
Zaretzky. Welcome, Ms. Zaretzky. Thank you for coming.
So I'm a parent, and I wasn't, I don't have any prepared remarks, and I wasn't sure how these meetings actually worked. It's the first time I've been to one. And I missed some of the beginning speakers, so I think I'm probably going to restate what some previous people have said, but I wanted to just bring a little bit more of a personal story to support the GT program. I have two sons in the Magnet program right now, and specifically, when one of my sons was in second grade, I think first grade, you know, kids can fit in because, you know, they're just getting used to the school system and going with the flow. In second grade, my son had already mastered, actually, in preschool, he had already mastered kindergarten state standards. And in second grade, he excelled in everything that he was supposed to be doing in first grade as well as second grade. And he felt like an oddball because he didn't really relate to the other kids. So he struggled. He had behavior problems. The teacher labeled him a troublemaker, and he just had a hard time. He actually was in the pull-out program, and that can be good for some kids, but three hours a week where you get to do some fun, creative activities is not enough to stimulate, engage, and fulfill these kids who are highly gifted and their interests. So thankfully, in third grade, he went into the SWAS program, and things changed. All of a sudden, he had best friends, the kids around him, you know, they just had similar interests, and he was more engaged in school, and the troubles that he was going through in second grade sort of disappeared. And now he's in the Magnet program, and he's thriving. So I find it hard to believe that as the school district is expanding and we're building more and more schools, that we are cutting back on these gifted services. It's just, it's not, it's not just giving some kids extra opportunity. It's preventing them from having any interest in school and from withdrawing totally and becoming troublemakers and not having anything to do with themselves in school because they're bored. So I sort of think that the last speaker, when she said, "If you have to cut anything," which I really wish you'd be expanding, because if this was a different meeting, I could tell you all sorts of complaints I have about the gifted program, but right now, no. I'm praising it to the highest degree because I think it's really important that you don't cut these services.
Thank you, Ms. Zaretzky.
Barbara Johnson.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you. Basically, I just want to add to what the last speaker said, all the advantages of the gifted program, and my, especially my oldest, had similar experiences, not fitting in in the general ed, and then also, you know, because socially gifted kids can have, they might want to spend all their intensity on academics, writing, and math, where some of the other kids, that's interesting to them, but they can't chew the fat with anyone, and that when you group them together, that allows the social development. But, so basically, everything that the last speaker said for the advantages, and it also gives advantages to the general students, because then the teachers can concentrate. Because I taught mixed classes, gifted, and, oh, about 20 years ago, though, mixed, differentiating, it's difficult because you can't concentrate and really do activities to either one. But talking about the budget, though, I noticed in one of the reduction ideas, it was to eliminate the SWAS, some of the SWAS teachers and some of the Magnet teachers, and basically the entire HUG. For at least the elementary and Magnet, I was just thinking, another idea to save money because you have to hire back some of the gen ed teachers, have the gifted kids, if you have to, with less gifted teachers, but keep them still in the SWAS. That way, if you're having the gifted kids in overpopulated gen classes compared to overpopulated gifted, you're losing both advantages if you go with what's proposed. If you cut some of the gifted teachers, and then the gifted kids are still in the SWAS program, the negative would be they may have more children in the class. program, the negative would be they may have more children in the class. That negative is less of the negatives of having more children with a mixed class, because the bigger the classes get, the harder it is to handle the differences. So if you have a large classes, if you have light kids, it's a little easier to handle. That's all I wanted to say was the other idea of the budget.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate the suggestion.
Melissa Bozen.
Welcome, Melissa. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Good morning, President Simon Holman, Superintendent Davis, fellow board members. Good morning. My name is Melissa Bozen. I'm sorry, I'm still suffering from bronchitis, so I'm still a little out of it, so I apologize. Good morning. My name is Melissa Bozen. I am the President of the Washoe Education Support Professionals. So I represent the bus driver, secretaries, nutrition service workers, library aides, and assistants in the elementary schools. So I'm just here to kind of give you guys blessings. I know that the decisions that you're going to have to be making are going to be incredibly hard, and I know that there's a lot of our bargaining unit jobs that are going to be looked at today. And I just wanted to kind of caution you and just remind you that please don't make a haste decision. Take a step back and take a breath before these decisions are made. Any positions that are set to be eliminated, those responsibilities are put onto another ESP. And that the morale of the ESPs throughout the district is incredibly low. So any questions or anything that I would be more than happy to answer for you all? I know that the decisions that are going to be made are going to be hard, and I don't envy any of you for having to make those decisions. But my other question is, is that have we truly looked outside the box? Have we truly looked at all of the different funding avenues that would be able to happen for the district? So those would just be my questions to you. But good luck, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Melissa. And just to let folks know, the intention is not to make decisions today. We want to get all the information, and we'll be, we'll be hopefully able to be better informed when we do need to make decisions. So we appreciate everybody's input.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. Appreciate that. And thank you all for coming and making time in a morning. I know you all have many things to do, and we appreciate the input. It's all, it's very important to us to hear from all voices, so thanks for coming. Okay, we'll move on to action to adopt the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Cottrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item 2.01, which is Presentation and Overview of the Results of the Community Budget Forums and the Community Budget Survey Regarding the 2019-20 Budget, presented by Samantha Frederickson, who we, our hats off to Samantha for doing such a great job of helping to initiate those programs last year and then to improve them this year. So thank you to Samantha and all of the staff members who helped us put those together. And also Mark Mathers, our Chief Financial Officer, who did a yeoman's job of getting a lot of that work together. So welcome, Sam.
Thank you, Samantha Frederickson, Board Community Engagement Coordinator, and here with Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer. And we were, we are going to present about the results of the survey as well as the community engagement forums. And I know many of you have looked at the survey already and heard the results because we have reported those at the budget forums, but we'll go into a little more depth on some of the questions as well. So, starting off, the survey was open from December 3rd to January 7th. We received almost 5,000 responses, about 1,000 of which were WCSD employees, and this was more than double what we received last year in terms of responses.
And I just want to make a comment for the public in terms of context. That's an astonishing response rate, and we are so grateful to the community for taking the time to give us that feedback. In the past, having done statistically significant random sample surveys of the entire county, which is the same area served by the district, you can actually have a statistically valid sample with only about 700 responses. So to have 5,000 is just tremendous, and I really, I thank everybody for responding, and I also thank the staff for doing a good job of publicizing it so we got responses. So thank you.
So the survey asks several questions. It's important to note, I think, that the survey, when we put out the survey, that was really before a lot of the results of priority-based budgeting had been revealed. So we weren't able in the survey to ask specific questions about priority-based budgeting, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to talk about that during the budget forums. So the survey is a little bit more general in some of the questions. The first question that I'll talk about, we asked people to allocate $100 between the five priorities of the strategic plan and how they would, how much money they would indicate for each priority. So you can see that they would allocate, this is the aggregate total of responses, about $31 to academic growth, $20 to career and college readiness, $23 to well-rounded student experience, and then about 16 to safe and supportive environment, and $10 to community and family partnerships. So about $74 total went to general instruction areas. Question number six in the survey was an open-ended question that we asked folks if there were other priorities that they would like the district to consider funding. So we allowed people to write in responses, and I have to give a big shout out to Megan in Communications because she read through all 1,500 of these responses and helped me come up with this list. So this is the top 10, this is the top five, the next slide will be the remaining five, of the top 10 of what people would like to prioritize. So number one, you can see increased salaries and/or better benefits for teachers and support staff. Number two, lower class size, hire more teachers than support staff. Number three, cut administrative positions and pay. Number four, music and the arts. I think they mean keep, not cut, music and the arts. Number five was keeping physical education, athletics, and health programs. Number six is special education program and staffing. Number seven is upgrading technology, classroom supplies, classroom materials, and equipment. Number eight is career and technical education programs. Number nine, safety and security. And number 10 is behavioral supports, social and emotional learning, mental health. For question number seven, we asked people if they supported increasing resources to lower-rated schools in order to increase their performance, if this meant reducing resources at higher-rated schools. You can see that about 60% of the respondents opposed this idea, 36.4% strongly opposing, and 24.9% somewhat opposing. And then you've got 27% somewhat supporting and 11% strongly supporting. In question number eight, we asked folks, we gave, we gave people a list of broad categories of possible partial solutions to the district's budget deficit, and we asked them to indicate how they feel about each concept. So of the ideas, number one here is lobbying the state to reduce mandates. Actually, no. Number one, I'm sorry, is looking for efficiencies in central services operations, followed closely by number two of lobbying the state to reduce mandates. And number three is looking for efficiencies in instruction. And you can see the remainder on that list. Question number nine, we asked, "In the event that WCSD and the Board of Trustees had to pursue reductions of services in order to balance its budget, the following cost-reduction measures may be considered." And we asked people to indicate their top three cost-cutting measures by placing first, second, or third next to the choice. So you can see here that the first choice is central service functions. That received the greatest number of votes for first, second, or third. Reductions to teacher support, like training and professional development, was the next highest category. And you can see that the least favorite here was reductions to instruction. Only 78 people marked that as their first choice, and 130 people indicated that would be their second choice. So we'll look at who filled out the survey. You can see that 58% were parents or guardian of students, only 6/10 of a percent were students, 26% were employees, and more than half of the people who filled out the survey this year said that they filled out last year's survey as well.
Yes, Vice President Raymond.
I'll just take this time in the presentation to say that I would love to see the student number increase. I know we work at that, but if we can continue to work at that, I had the opportunity to speak with some students at one of the budget forums, and they were disappointed that there wasn't more involvement from their perspective. And I also know that, from looking at the results, that the demographics of those who responded to the survey, while the number is high, it's not necessarily representative of the district. And I don't know if there's work we could do there to try to reach more of our community. I know we talked about it last year, too, so if we can just continue to try to strategize ways to reach other demographics and segments of the community, that their feedback is important and might be different than some of those that are responding.
I agree. And we, yeah, absolutely. Always striving to be better, and we do want to reach all of our families, so. That's all I have on the survey. So before I go to the budget forums, I don't know if anyone else has any questions on the survey or comments.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. So our community budget forums, we held for the second year. We did this where we held five community forums across the district and solicited feedback from parents, students, staff, and community members. And again, we were able to really ask folks about priority-based budgeting this time around as we had the information by the time of the first budget forum. And this year, we had more than double last year's attendees, so that's important to note. So these are the forums that we held. January 24th at Toll's Elementary. January 25th was a special community partner budget forum that we held at the Dolan Lexus Community Room with nonprofit organizations and business partners and government partners. January 31st, we held a forum for staff at the Washoe Education Association. On February 7th, due to the snow, we actually, yeah, it was on February 7th. It was supposed to be on February 4th. We held one at Smith Ridge Sem Academy. And then our final February 11th budget forum was here in the boardroom, and it was also livestreamed virtually. Our participation started off a little bit slower. We had 35 people at Toll's. Just 20 community partners attended the special community organization one that we held. But then we increased participation at the Washoe Education Association. We had 70 participants. At Smith Ridge, we had 120 participants, including some Spanish speakers. So we had, we did have interpretation services at all of the budget forums, however, that one was the only one, I believe, where we used it. And then we had 135 participants here for the boardroom, the virtual, and that was about half of those people were here in the boardroom, and about half were streaming online. The forum structure for the first four forums was similar to last year, upfront presentation followed by breakouts into small group discussions with our staff facilitators. We had staff facilitators from many of our departments. So shout out and thank you to everyone who gave up a lot of their evenings to help out with these conversations. And then we did a report back and question and answer, period. And the virtual forum was structured a little differently. We had a little bit of a longer upfront presentation, and then obviously, it was challenging to figure out how to break up into groups virtually, so we had just question and answer and comments. And we had quite a few people here in the boardroom as well as streaming, so we alternated between virtual participants and the live participants. Happy to report that we have finished answering all of the questions that we received via email or the orange comment cards that people filled out. So everyone has received a response. If you didn't, come talk to me because maybe it went into your spam. So that was the structure of the virtual forum. And what we really talked about during all of these forums was the programs that I know you'll be talking about later today, but we gave folks a list of some of the, some of the programs that came up in quartile three and four as per priority-based budgeting, and asked them to really talk about some of the ideas and thoughts and comments that they had about these particular programs. We really wanted specific feedback from folks about what was working at their schools, what wasn't working, if they had ideas for how to make things more cost-effective. So we, the programs we talked about were communications, community engagement, custodial services, transportation, groundskeeping, curriculum initiatives, gifted and talented, library services, and English learners. And again, we got this question a lot, these were not all of the programs that are being considered for reductions, but these were the programs that we felt we could really benefit from public feedback on because these are programs that touch people's lives. So this is how we decided to kind of focus on discussing these programs. So what we asked people to do was, once they broke up into small groups, was start talking about what's important at their school, share personal stories, and reflect what they prioritize at their school. We asked people to rank the programs. Not everyone really did rank the programs. I think mostly it just turned into a discussion about the programs and the second piece, which was asking them for their ideas for efficiencies. And then, of course, we asked them to come up with, you know, other ideas if there were other programs that weren't listed, that they would consider lower priority or higher priority. We wanted to hear about those as well. So to go through all of this feedback that we received, we looked at the report back. So we had people report back after the group discussions, so we collected all of the flip chart paper that we got back from those, the program description worksheet, which listed the programs that I just discussed, and then had a spot for people to fill in their ideas. Those were handed out and collected after every forum. We had comment cards available for people to write additional ideas and/or questions. Collected those. And then for the virtual forum, we had emails coming in to questions@washoeschools.net email address, as well as an electronic version of that same worksheet, which I looked through as well. So to, so what I'll talk about next is kind of summarizing the feedback. But it's important to note that this is anecdotal, it's not scientific, generally trying to summarize what I heard and read the most based on these different forms of soliciting So some of the ideas, and I'll go through each program, some of the ideas that came out for each program, for communications, people mentioned that engagement within families was important. They suggested that savings could be implemented by increasing digital and decreasing paper communications. There were questions about utilizing school and community partnerships, as well as interns. And again, as I go through these summaries, I'm not editorializing anything, I'm just reporting what people suggested and ideas. Some may be feasible, some may not be feasible, but I'm the messenger in this sense, so. Curriculum initiatives, folks suggested to cut school-specific programs that weren't standardized, and there was some, quite a few comments about making professional development more effective and more cost-efficient and utilizing grant funding. For custodial, there seemed to be an overall general agreement not to cut custodians. There were several suggestions to implement students' help in classroom cleanup and to increase fees to outside groups using school space as a way to offset additional custodial costs. Similar with groundskeeping, there was suggestions to utilize community partners, volunteers, and student interns to assist with groundskeeping, and again, the suggestion to increase fees for sports leagues, sports leagues to offset costs. For gifted and talented education, there really was not much consensus among participants. Many parents and students spoke about the benefits of GT, and I know we've heard many more since these budget forums, so this is really what we heard during the forums, not subsequent emails and comments. But as someone said, mentioned today, there was discussion about pull-out programs being less efficient than SWAS. Other suggestions included changing the GT threshold to allow more students to participate, giving classroom teachers the opportunity for GT endorsements, centralizing GT or reducing GT at the high school level. With transportation, there was a discussion about increasing athletic transportation fees, but many suggestions about doing that in an equitable way, such as utilizing scholarships or basing individual students' fees on their FRL status, free and reduced lunch status. And there was, at the time, there was general agreement about cutting transportation to For library services, again, these were hard to summarize, there was really no general agreement. Several students and staff spoke about the importance of libraries in schools. Some ideas that were raised included sharing libraries among neighboring schools, partnering with county library system, or implementing digital libraries. Other suggestions included increasing the lab fee and recovering fees from unreturned books. And with English learners, there was general agreement to keep this support for students. There were some ideas about... There were some ideas about implementing more of a two-way immersion model in more schools or allowing more teachers to get their EL endorsement. Some other interesting ideas that came up throughout the forums and questions, whether or not the district gets money from speeding ticket fines in school zones and whether that money can help with our budget. There were suggestions to freeze merit increases or pay cuts for senior-level administrators. There were quite a few suggestions about a four-day school and work week. There were suggestions for utilizing more volunteers and community partners as a way to reduce costs. And a few suggestions to implement buddy programs among schools. So schools that are raising more money can maybe share some of that funding with schools that are raising less money to help offset some of these costs, like athletic fees and if transportation fees are increased and whatnot. And that is all I got.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions for Sam. Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, just more of a comment, and I thank you for the work you did on this. Being newly elected, coming into this, we essentially started doing the forums like two weeks after we got here. A suggestion that I have that might help with our issue with not getting feedback from around the county is doing one forum in each of the five standard districts. Because I know representing the north, I have very few constituents, if any, show up any of the forums, just because the forum locations were so far away. And I don't know how many of them took part in the survey. So my concern is I have very few of my constituents that have actually given their feedback. So I have to go back out and just make sure they're aware. So that'd be a suggestion I have because each of us have relationships in our districts, and we can work with schools to get student feedback, staff feedback, community feedback. And then we're equitable by being all around the county versus being more centralized in the city centers. Just a recommendation, but again, appreciate your work on this. It's very helpful for us, and we, it's good to get out and get the community's feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Cottle. Heathers?
I know, Sam, one of the things that we tried this year was the virtual forum as a way to address including input from folks who are farther away and could not get here. And I know you and I have had the conversation that perhaps when we try it next time, we'll make it only virtual because we, I think we did, it was hard for people virtually to connect with us because we had so much in-person commentary. So maybe that's one thing in addition to making sure we do them in districts. And I personally want to thank all of the people who came and participated. We had lots of families that came. And I know how many things are on a plate of a family in the evening during the week. And it was just really, really impressive how many thoughtful comments and how much thoughtful input we had. So really want to, want to thank folks. And again, thank the staff for giving up their evenings to be there night after night and really help us through this. It was very, very constructive. I thought people were extremely thoughtful in their comments to us. And again, just very much appreciated the whole process. Other comments or questions? I think because we've been through some of this before, you don't see as many board questions because we've had the opportunity to look at this information. But we're very glad to share it with folks. And we do still have all of our PowerPoint information from those budget forums up on the website. And can somebody give us the location for that?
Washoschools.net/budget.
Okay.
You can view the PowerPoints, you can watch the videos, you can see the worksheet that we discussed. Yeah, all the information is up there. And it's important to note, too, last year, I think we did try to, just to address your comment, we tried to hold the forums in a more geographically diverse area. So we had one up in Incline, we had one in North Valleys, we had one in Spanish Springs, I think. So it was, it was a little, it was one in each of the five districts. This year, we tried to, we tried something different in making them a little more targeted. So the staff budget forum, the community partner budget forum, and then the virtual forum to reach everyone else. But it's always a learning process from year to year. And hopefully, you know, if we do these again next year, they'll be better and more well-attended. And, you know, we'll learn from what worked this year and what didn't work this year.
We've got some great ideas. Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything else you want to add at this point? Yes, yeah. Big, big thanks to everybody and to Megan for reading 1,500 responses and helping to put those into theme. So appreciate it. Okay, are we moving on to Mr. Mathers?
Yeah.
All right, it's the, I don't mean to say you're the B team because you're less than the A team, but it's the budget team, so.
Yes, we'll take that, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, so thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We will try to hum through this presentation as efficiently as possible. But here with me today is Mike Schroeder, our Budget Director, and Jeff Bozzo, our Budget Project Manager. They are the heart and soul of kind of the analysis we do, along with James Furman, who just started with budget not too long ago. So this morning, what we'd like to do, and again, kind of keeping it crisp if we can, is to let Mike talk about our budget situation. He's going to give an estimate of where we stand currently in the fiscal year 20, kind of estimation process. And again, things are early. Then myself and Jeff will go through a couple, and Mike, a couple of the special requests the boards had, cover those today, and with more to follow in March and April. And then I'll give a summary, hopefully not too boring and dry, of the priority-based budgeting process, just to, again, refamiliarize everyone with how that was done, because I know there are many questions about kind of the process of doing that. And then hopefully, the bulk of the discussions today will be department presentations. So the idea here is that departments will go through each of the reduction options they identified to give you some context for how those ideas were developed and how the departments are currently staffed. And then certainly, a discussion of the impacts if you were to pursue any of those options. And as Madam President said, the intent here really today is not so much to make any decisions, but it is to hear from departments, for you to ask questions of those departments, get information. Certainly, if there's time, you know, we're open to feedback, requests for additional or further analysis. But we'll have to see about kind of time-wise whether we get there.
And Mark, so I can help you move us through this with the three hours that we have remaining. So what's your estimate of how much time we're asking departments to provide in their presentations?
Well, it depends, because some departments have very few reduction options they need to cover, and others, like Mr. Etchar, have quite a few. So we're basically just asking folks to give a high-level summary. Again, you know, maybe for the smaller departments, maybe 10 minutes. For the larger departments, they'll need more time.
Okay, so we'll have 180 minutes with no breaks, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we need public comment as well. Okay, just reminding everybody to help us be concise so we can hear from everybody and not short anybody on their ability to get, give us input.
Yes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, I wasn't sure when you would like to.
Yeah.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. So I just want to talk a little bit about this process. And first, thank all the chiefs and directors that leaned in and did this work. It was very new work for us, as we did priority-based budgeting. As we know, for a decade, the district has had a structural deficit, which simply means the ongoing revenues have not covered our ongoing costs. As we end this fiscal year, our current deficit is approximately $7.5 million, which compared to historically, we have brought that number down a great deal. In 2017, the Board of Trustees adopted a policy requiring the elimination of a structural deficit within three years. Fiscal year 2020 is the second year of that plan. In order to meet the board's goals of balancing the budget, the leadership team and I will be presenting options today for the board to consider if it wants to meet its policy to balance the budget. To be, to be very clear, the leadership team and I are not recommending these cuts necessarily since in almost all cases, these are very deep cuts in areas that directly and indirectly impact students. But our charge was to outmind ways for the boards to reach its goal. That can only be achieved by providing all the possible ways to make these cuts, but also the impacts these cuts will have on our students and employees. And our chiefs and department heads will talk about that as they discuss these cuts today. We have done this using the priority-based budgeting process that we began implementing, and the board approved in 2018 of January. Department administrators use this information from this process to provide the Board of Trustees options, along with the potential impacts of these reductions for your consideration. The purpose of PBB was to determine allocation of resources as aligned to our strategic plan and high-priority goals. Based on what the consultants shared, the organization should not make budget reductions decisions solely based on PBB. However, as we proceeded with this new process, PBB provided us with an opportunity to look at all programs with a focus on low-scoring programs. We don't want discussion today to be involved asking chiefs or department managers to defend or explain why these options were identified. The reason why I say that is because these are the programs that were identified through the priority-based budgeting process as having a lower alignment with the board's strategic plan and goals. Managers were told to develop option plans for how to reduce these services, not whether or not they thought it was a good idea or a bad idea. Today is to get feedback from the board to look at these cuts. And these cuts are truly painful. I've spent a week talking to employees, union reps, about the impacts it would have on students, staff morale, and the service we provide our families. If the board chooses to balance the budget this fiscal year, the next steps will be to reevaluate our strategic plan and the metrics being measured based on the reductions made. We can no longer ask staff to execute a strategic plan that was prepared based on resources that staff allowances may not exist anymore. So as we do this work, we have to be considerate of what our charge is and what we're asking staff to do. And I know it's tough work. We have read every email sent to us. No one in here wants to get rid of GT, librarians, bus drivers, cooks, teachers. But we're at a place where if we're going to balance a deficit, we have to bring options to show where that happens. And the board has tough decisions ahead of them. They are very thoughtful about the children we serve. They're very thoughtful about the employees and the families. So we just ask that you work with us as we work through this process to determine how we're going to arrive at our endpoint today. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Very, very critical comments of, or I don't want to say critical that they're criticizing, critical that they're important, comments that none of us want to be in the position of reducing this budget further. And yet, the district, not just the board, but the district has a statutory responsibility to deliver a balanced budget. And we have to do so before the conclusion of the legislative session, when we are very hopeful that there may be some increased support to, to schools. So we want everyone to be aware that even with the input that we receive today, again, as the superintendent said, these are not recommendations. These are alternatives that staff has identified based on this very thorough process that the staff has been through. And again, this priority-based budgeting process is a national best practice in government finance, and we are the first school district in the nation to undertake this process. So again, none of us want to be in these, in these shoes. And we all, as Superintendent said, recognize the central importance of our job to educate students and to support student achievement in every way that we can. So, but we have an ugly statutory duty to balance this budget within a timeframe that doesn't give us all the information that we would need to do the best job. So with that, are you finished?
I am.
Okay. All right, okay. Let's move forward, Mr. Schroeder.
Thank you, President Simon Holland. Good morning, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. I'm Mike Schroeder, Budget Director for the School District. A while back, we started a budget process in September of last year for fiscal year 1920. And at that workshop, we talked about how our budget is built. I know we got three members who were at that meeting. We have three new ones. So this is kind of a high-level overview for you new guys and kind of a refresher for the former or existing trustees. It really starts with enrollment. Enrollment's a key driver of a lot of our revenue and a lot of our expenditures. On the revenue side, we're looking at all the information we can to try to figure out where we think we're going to be. Expenditure side, same thing. The enrollment projections play into the way we allocate for teachers and other positions at schools. As you know, staff is our biggest expenditure here at the district, and enrollment is a big part of how we determine our staffing levels. So we're kind of looking at revenues, expenditures, assuming until other decisions are made, all those existing programs that we're currently doing are rolling forward. You compare those revenues to those expenditures, and they typically don't match up, especially for us. It's usually the revenues are less than the expenditures. So we have to reconcile that somehow. And that's where everybody comes in, and we all work together to try to figure out the best way to do that and ultimately get to a proposed budget. So where are we at right now? Right now, we are really, really early in the process. There's a lot of unknowns out there, a lot of things that we have to get more information on to really nail down where we think we are. However, there are some things we do know about. Enrollment, for one, has remained relatively flat over the last couple of years, actually with a slight decrease. So when we're looking at that, we'll probably be estimating flat growth or no growth for the next fiscal year. On the revenue side, LSSR, sales tax. That's a big number, around $200 million. But in the grand scheme of things, whether we nail that one or not, doesn't really matter. If we're a little less and we actually get a little more, then the state would decrease the amount they pay. If we were overestimating, then the state would increase their amount. So it doesn't affect our final number as far as that goes. Property taxes are a big thing, roughly over $110 million of our budget. But we don't really know. There's a lot of factors that go into that. We have a tax cap. Basically, the Department of Taxation and the county go through a parcel-by-parcel reconciliation. Assessor can assess values, but you can only tax so much on those assessments. So what happens is the Department of Taxation issues what they call their pro forma. And that is until March 25th when we get that information. And Department of Taxation is pretty much wanting you to use that as your estimate for taxes. If you vary from that, they're going to ask you why. GST is about $18 to $20 million, not as significant as these other ones. Per pupil basics part, that's a huge number. And right now, we're, there's a lot of massaging of that number probably to be made. Legislature ultimately has to approve something. Economic Forum meets on May 5th. They determine the state, how much money the state has for their upcoming biennial budget. That could impact the way they're currently proposing to spend their money. Once again, once we get that number, it still has to go through what we call the Equity Allocation Model or the Nevada Plan. What that does is take that statewide per pupil amount and come up with a unique amount by district. And there's a lot of fluctuations that can happen in that. Until we get that, that's another huge unknown. There's also some changes that are being proposed to the Equity Allocation Model. There's a team that met over the last biennium, and these changes have been proposed. And right now, we don't know where they're going to end up or how that's going to affect us either. And then there's also a lot of talk about a new funding model that kind of could negate everything I just talked about. So, but like I say, there's just a huge amount of unknowns right now. As we get this information, we'll be updating you, and we'll be able to refine our estimates. On the expenditure side, we do know that we have an ongoing structural deficit of about $7.5 million. Basically, that means, you know, we're spending more than we're taking in. If we continue to do everything we were doing in the current fiscal year, we'd be $7.5 million in the hole starting out. We know we have new schools, and it always come with a cost. Staffing, if we're using flat enrollment, it pretty much stays about the same. But that staffing does have rollouts. We have employees who move on salary schedules, and that costs us money. Medical insurance has been a problem over the last few years. We're out for an RFP right now, and hopefully that will help with that situation. But once again, that's another unknown. We don't know where that's going to end up. We know we have a PERS rate increase. What happens with that is essentially, the rate is about 28% right now in general. It's going to go up to 29.25%. So that 1.25% increase, we, we have to pay for, and employees sort of pay for it, too. Typically, the employee salary is going to be reduced by half of that increase, or 0.625%. Typically, the employee salary is going to be reduced by half of that increase, or 0.625%. Then we apply this new rate to that revised salary. But that is not a net zero gain. It still costs us money. And also, cost of living increases, they're being proposed in the budget right now for the state. We still have to negotiate those with our own employee bargaining groups and things like that. So like I say, it's really early. There's a huge amount of unknowns, and we need more information before we can truly nail down exactly where we're at. And that will be part of this, once again, reconciliation process. And we're really using priority-based budgeting to help us look at the existing deficit and how we may be able to solve that problem and ultimately get to a proposed budget that is balanced, as trustee Simon Holland pointed out. Also discussed at the September workshop was how the state funds education in Nevada. And what happens is the state, they really determine our funding level. It's based on a series of assumptions. They start with the first year of the prior biennium's actual cost. They make some assumptions to grow that for fiscal year 19, the current year we're in. Now they're moving into the next biennium, fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21, using a lot of those same assumptions, plus adding enrollment growth, things like that, to say, this is what we think you guys need to fund education in Nevada. So they come up with a statewide expenditure level. When we're talking about the state, they also fund other state programs. We have class size reduction. We have special education funding. We have REBY3 categorical grants, Zoom, Victory Schools, GT. And we also have a new Nevada funding formula that's trying to provide a way to get to lower quartile students for EL and at-risk kids. But once again, the state is also, we're competing against other programs. We're not the only thing the state funds, okay? They have prisons and welfare, Medicare, healthcare, things like that that take a huge toll on the state's budget. So I kind of already talked about this. They're basically making assumptions, using a base fiscal year 18 actual expenditures, moving those forward, adding rollups. They don't really necessarily add other inflationary costs. I mean, mainly on the salary and benefits side, not so much on textbook and supply side. Plus, they're doing enrollment growth. So what that gets to is a total expenditure amount, and they know we have other revenues. So they say, okay, this is what we think you need to spend. You have these other revenues that are outside this per pupil amount. So they do assumptions on those, and they back those out of that total to get to what they call a basic support amount. And this is really divided by their estimated enrollment, and they come up with statewide per pupil amount. And that per pupil amount, once again, goes into the equity allocation formula, which distributes that a unique amount to each school district. So when you look at this process, what really happens is they're considering all our revenues, and they are determining our fate when they come up with this per pupil amount. So it's really important to understand that and know that, you know, once we get there, it's kind of outside of our hands. So this is just kind of to say, all right, we're talking about, what is this per pupil funding? And if you take our current year, we have $5,737 a pupil, about $358 million. Now, there's three components that are included in that. One is that sales tax, as I said. That goes up or down. It doesn't impact anything of this 358 million. If it went up, the state would pay less. If it went down, the state would pay more. But when you include the sales tax, it also includes 1/3 of our property tax. Then after, the state is really backing those out too and saying, well, this is what's left over. That's what we need to fund, and that's how they come up with that amount. But when you combine all the three components, it makes up about 78% of our revenue budget. And outside of that, about 22% is really our 2/3 property tax and the government services tax. So that's really how we get our money, and it's all, when you look at it, it's pretty solid. I mean, it doesn't fluctuate a lot. It's kind of a guaranteed basic support amount, and using the Adm. Lauren projections that the Department of Taxation provides, those, we stay within that pretty much year to year. So once we determine our revenues, they're pretty solid. So what we're kind of looking at is, you know, we have a lot of unknowns. So what do we know about? What's within our control right now? What are we waiting to find out about? So we know that we have an ongoing structural deficit, new school costs, and we're going to have to look at a way of reducing our budget to handle that. Outside of that, we still have all these unknown factors I've just been talking about, and those could add to the deficit. We don't know until all those things are kind of resolved. And that's kind of where, you know, this is the ongoing thing. We sort of have a funding dilemma. You know, I talked a lot about assumptions. You know, the state's making all these assumptions over here on their side. We're making all these assumptions over here on our side, and they don't tend to match up over the years historically. I can do pretty much the same assumptions over here as over there, and it's, the per pupil funding doesn't seem to come to us to pay for our side of this equation. So we get kind of out of balance. And that's, we're hoping, that's a critical issue to fund the base. I mean, that's been talked about by everybody, and hopefully they do that, and we'll see where that goes. But right now, this has kind of been an ongoing dilemma for us.
So just to kind of recap, a couple of key points that I think, just to emphasize kind of how did we get here? The state goes back to the first year of the biennium and looks at school districts' actual costs to build a base budget. So they don't go to the prior year's budget and then build off of that. They go back two years to the first year of the current biennium, look at our actual costs, not our budgeted costs, but our actual costs. And then, as shown here, the state determines what they're going to fund, and as this chart notes, until the current biennium, when the new governor announced his intention of funding COLAs, the state had not funded COLAs since fiscal year '09. So what did that mean? We know we have to fund COLAs for our teachers and staff. They can't go without an inflationary increase to their salaries. That meant the school district and all school districts either had to cut costs in other areas in programs, or they ran up a greater deficit in order to fund those COLAs. So I think the board appreciates kind of the flawed structure of K through 12 funding in the state, and we just want to hit it home that you're having to deal with this. And again, I think if we were more appropriately funded, we wouldn't be in the situation we are. And the consequence of that is the next chart, which I know this is hard to read, but we went back again, this is a chart we've used a couple of years now, went back over the last five fiscal years and looked at how our revenues have grown at Washoe County School District versus the three other primary government agencies in the county. And what kind of inflates our numbers a tad is they took kindergarten funding, full-day kindergarten funding that had been grant-funded and threw it in the general fund. If I take that out to do an apples-to-apples comparison, our revenues annually have grown 2.4%. And it's only grown up, grown 2.4% because of those outside revenues, because property taxes and GST revenues have actually outperformed what we would have guessed. That compares to Washoe County's revenues that grew at 4.5%. Reno's a little less than four, and the city of Sparks that grew more than 5% a year. So we're roughly seeing revenue growth of half of those other government agencies. And so, you know, that's the world we are dealing with. It is tough to manage costs when your revenues are only going up 2.4% in the midst of a financial boom in the state and in Washoe County. But that's the, like I said, the consequence of this flawed model. We're just not being funded at a very high level. I think any of these agencies would have the same problems we do if their revenues in the general fund had only gone up 2.4% a year like ours had. And, you know, in addition to that, or, you know, part of the problem, again, is the per pupil funding for Washoe County School District. It has not kept up with inflation since 2011. This actually adjusts for the special appropriation we received last year and we hope to receive this year. That equates approximately $104 per student. So we added that into this chart to try to get kind of a real-world, as fair as we could be, analysis. And again, on a per pupil basis, we are actually $87 lower after considering inflation than we were in 2011. So again, very difficult situation to provide services that, you know, have only gone up. We've got lots of different issues now than we used to have, and that requires additional resources. And so we're trying to manage those additional resources against a after-inflation falling revenue that comprises 80% of our general fund budget.
And Mark, if I might add, for folks who may be listening as well as the folks here, it's an odd feature of the Nevada Plan that Washoe and Clark Counties actually receive the lowest per pupil funding in the state of all the counties. And that's because, while we have so much growth, that growth actually is, causes us to have a reduction in our distributive school account per pupil amount. So Washoe and Clark are actually, in a sense, we are penalized for our good economic performance.
Yes, we are. And so, as you all know, that has led to, all of these factors have led to the Washoe County School District having a deficit. As you can see, we made a lot of progress over the last several years in reducing that deficit. We do have a budgeted deficit of $7.5 million. We'll probably do a little better than that in the current fiscal year. We'll report on that in March or April, but we still have a deficit. And so that segues into Mike's discussion of what our current deficit is.
Yes, we've talked, excuse me. There's a lot of things we know about, a lot of things we don't know about. So we're kind of focused today on talking about the things we do know about, and that's, we do know we have a deficit. We have new school costs. We're still waiting to find out about a lot of other things that impact our funding. But ultimately, the two combined are going to get us to a final budget, and there's going to be a lot of discussion to get there. And today, we're focused on what we know about. And certainly, as we receive this other information, we'll be providing you budget updates and hopefully, I don't know where we'll get at our tentative budget that's due in April, but by the time we get to our final budget, we're hoping we can have everything solved. But once again, a lot of stuff happens at the very end of the legislature, and we might not even know that by the time of our final budget. One of the things we talked about earlier was using our government services tax fund, which is a capital projects fund, to help with the general fund by kind of shifting our costs for fleet, bus leases, those costs over to the GST fund. And we talked about that in January at a board meeting and said, you know, that could save us about $2.6 million. We also talked back in September, and for a while, we've known we've had these new schools coming on board, and there's a cost associated with them. And the cost isn't that we have to fund new teachers. The teachers kind of follow the students to the school. But there are brand-new positions. We have a new principal. We have assistant principals. We have librarians, secretaries, custodians, those type of positions. Those are in addition to, we don't necessarily shift those positions over to these new schools. Every school needs those positions. So those are what really make up these new costs, and we do know that we have three schools on multi-track. Those will be going to a traditional or balanced calendar, and that'll save us a little money. But the net cost is about $3.4 million when we look at that. And so if you take what we do know, we know we have an ongoing structural deficit. We know we have new school costs. So, you know, we're looking at close to $11 million when you look at that. But we've already talked about moving, shifting cost to debt service. That helps us save money. And we've done a lot of analysis on what we call a contra-salary and benefit account. If you recall, every year, you know, we're projecting a big deficit, and it was kind of like, by the time we got to the end of the year, we had salary savings that really could offset that. And so what we did for fiscal year 19 is recognize those savings upfront, and we used about $4 million to do that. So in the current fiscal year 19 budget, we're assuming we have about $4 million. And if you look kind of back at the last couple of years, it's been higher than that. It's really hard to pinpoint exactly the categories and all that type of stuff. But after doing that analysis and kind of seeing where we're trending in the current fiscal year, where we're feeling like, we could probably up that from $4 million to $6 million or another $2 million. So essentially, you know, between shifting cost to GST and assuming a little more salary and benefit savings, we're offsetting the cost of the new schools plus digging into that ongoing deficit. So bring it down to about $6.3 million. That's just kind of what we know right now. There's a lot of unknowns, how our funding level ultimately pans out versus our needs for rollups and things like that. This could increase, but we don't know that right now. We're waiting for that information to come about.
And again, that assumes that the state legislature will approve the $8.6 million allocation to make Washoe County whole for an error that was made in the application of the funding formula in the last biennium. So we're all very hopeful that the legislature will pass that as well.
Yep, we sure are. So, you know, again, the number we're going to focus on for today is that $6.3 million deficit that rolls forward from the current fiscal year. Before we kind of go into priority-based budgeting and department presentations, there were a couple special requests by the board to analyze and look at issues that we do want to report back today. We've got two issues, the first of which is actually item number six. Jeff will go through a review of take-home vehicles that we performed with our recommendations. And then the second item is to look at contracted services, i.e. consulting services, to see if we could reduce our use of those services instead of cutting positions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to talk about the take-home vehicle analysis we did.
Thanks, Mark. Good morning, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. I'm here to talk about the take-home vehicle analysis. First, the methodology. We compared the cost of maintaining and using district vehicles versus the mileage reimbursement rate set by the IRS. The period of review we used was the last fiscal year, 2017-18. It was our last completed fiscal year. We also had no reassignments of vehicles between employees that had take-home vehicles. So it was a nice, clean year of data we had to work with. Another item we used was a survey of managers. The survey asked for the contracted days of take-home vehicles, how many days the vehicle was used, so that accounted for any days that they may have been out for sick leave, vacation, or professional development leave. We also asked for the average amount of times that they stopped at a meeting site between their home and work or work and home on their commute. That allowed us to only account for work miles. The costs that were included were fuel, maintenance such as new tires, oil changes, any additional parts and direct labor, insurance equivalent costs, and other repairs. The costs did not include indirect costs. The finding of this analysis were the positions that, in which the cost of the vehicle was less than the mileage reimbursement rate were the deputy superintendent, the chief operations officer, and all four area superintendents. Based on the analysis, management's recommendations are to eliminate all take-home vehicles effective July 1st. Additionally, the motor pool here at the district headquarters here at this building would be eliminated because it's not used enough to justify having. With the vehicles that would be eliminated, we would recycle those newer vehicles to departments that use vehicles and currently have vehicles that are 10 years older or have 100,000 miles or more on them. Lastly, because we're getting rid of the take-home vehicles, we would provide either a mileage reimbursement or some other type of reimbursement to those who currently have the take-home vehicles based on an average miles driven by each job category.
So Jeff, do we have a savings estimate at this point from that? Mr. Mather? So Jeff, do we have a savings estimate at this point from that? Mr. Mather?
Yeah. So when we've looked at this last budget cycle, the cost savings aren't huge. They're roughly $30,000 per year, $20,000 to $30,000 per year. But that does not count the acquisition, the purchase of new vehicles that we would need cyclically as those department vehicles are used. So we do save even more by not having to replace district vehicles.
Okay. Any questions on that? And I know we've had the conversation, you know, sometimes when we're looking for $6 million, $7 million in savings, it's a lot of work to make a change like this, and it has a huge impact on the staff. And so we tend to look for those big-ticket items that we can, you know, save a million dollars from. But with take-home vehicles, we also know it's an optics problem with our public as well. And we know that, you know, people see our take-home vehicles parked at a lunch spot, or they see them parked at Rayleigh's when somebody is on their way home, and it bothers our citizens. So we appreciate the sacrifices that staff will make if this is implemented. So thank you for bringing it forward. And thanks for the work that it took to make this analysis. Okay?
Okay. We were also, the board had a really good suggestion about looking at contract services. I know you guys see a lot of these coming through, the consent items on every board agenda. And always raises the question, what's going on? Why are we spending so much money on outside services? Can we do this ourselves? Do we really need these services? Things like that. So we tried to look at that. And we, our base year was last year, last fiscal year, fiscal year 18. And what we did is, we didn't look at every contract, obviously, capital projects. And we've had physical therapists, occupational therapists come to the board before to kind of explain that situation. So those were not areas that we included in this analysis. But we did look at contracts and services that were around the instructional and student support areas. And when we pulled the data, there was almost $7.8 million worth of expenditures. And just like you guys see, it's like, we're spending a lot of money on this. Is there anything we can do about it? And there were probably thousands, because there's a lot of littler ones included in this. So we narrowed it down to contracts that were over 25,000. But it still resulted in over $5.8 million worth of costs. So there was still a lot to look at. And then it's like, okay, what's making up that? Do a deeper dive. And the majority of those, what we find out, are really for grants. And the thing with grants, you have to understand, is pretty much all our grants are here to supplement what we do in the general fund, not supplant. So we can't take existing costs in the general fund and shift them over here, because the grants are asking us to do things that the general fund is not providing for. So even if we were to go to the grant areas and say, maybe we could not use this service for this year, reduce the cost this year, or perform the service in-house, it's not going to come back on the general fund side and save us any money. So after we take that factor out, it's like, what's left in the general fund? And it's really about $1.2 million. And when we look at that, well, what do you see? Obviously, the biggest one is really related to assessments. And first of all, regular assessments are really important to measure where our students are at and design programs to help them perform better. GT assessment is the cognitive assessment, and it determines the student's eligibility for GT services. And EL is kind of a federally mandated assessment that we have to perform for those students. So assessments is a huge cost. Not sure, there's a lot we can do there. Official fees, obviously, we're going to talk about athletics as part of our priority-based budgeting. But now, this is for basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, football, those type of things. And that's a large expanse that was part of this analysis. Then we have some smaller ones here, Children's Cabinet. That contract wasn't renewed in fiscal year 19. But we did take the funds and reinvest for psychological services in that area. So those are kind of already taken. We do Lawler graduation. A big cost of that is the production. And we've tried to keep that cost down. We have several employees that work with West Coast Audio to help provide this, so we don't have to spend as much money for them. But it's still a large cost. And we also, this is beyond the rental fee we pay to border agents. Last was a Brain Spring, which is related to our Read By Three, which is mandated by the state. And these are like phonics kits that are provided to all the schools. And then there's a small cost there for Sierra Arts Foundation, and they do artist residencies for about 10 schools in our district. So be happy to answer any questions you guys have related to this analysis.
Any questions? I know we did have a lot of responses on our community budget survey last year about assessments. And I don't know if we've been able to do anything to bring any of that cost down. I know a lot of parents feel like we do a lot of testing, as do the teachers. I think the last 10 weeks of schools, some of the teachers say they're doing testing every day. I don't know, any comments on the assessments? Have we been able to carve any of that down at all? And I know that's more a curriculum question, but...
Yeah, I don't know if Ben's here, but we did look at it last fiscal year. And most of these are mandated. I think MAP testing may have been the only one not mandated. And so we have looked at this. I know there's conversation at the legislature about testing as well currently. But the savings that we could make here are pretty minimal. Most of this is mandated.
Except for the MAP. And that, we do hear a lot from teachers that they appreciate the MAP tests, because that enables them to calibrate and target their instructional efforts based on individual students' needs. So, okay, any other questions on this one? Thank you all for doing the analysis again. You know, it takes a lot of time to answer questions like this. But I think it's good for us to be able to answer the public when the public asks about these things. Okay, we'll keep going.
Okay. The next section is to review, hopefully very quickly, how we use priority-based budgeting. And I'm going to fly through this, since I think I've talked to everyone here about this in prior meetings. But again, I think it's worth just going over before we see kind of department presentations. And so we've talked-
And Mark, just before you go, so we'll shortly have been at this about two hours. I'd rather not take breaks. I would rather, if trustees need to get up and take your own break, please do so. But I don't think we want to, we want to stop and have a break. Let's just keep going so that we can make sure we give time to everyone. Thank you.
Okay. So you've seen these steps before. Again, priority-based budgeting is a very intense process that involves hundreds of staff hours. It basically took us all year, and we were told by our consultant, we actually flew through the process pretty quickly. But again, to recap, you know, we start, we started with identifying the strategic goals of the board, and those are at the top. And I know this is hard to read, but they, again, include academic growth, career and college readiness, community and family partnerships, safe and supportive environment, and well-rounded student. And those are for the services, the external services that support students. And then on the right-hand column are what the goals were or priorities were for internal services that support indirectly students. And so for each of those goals, we had descriptions, and this went to the board for their kind of ratification. But this was used by scorers to win scoring. They looked at these descriptions to see whether there was a match of that program to these descriptions. It's not necessarily the case that if a program didn't, you know, match exactly the wording here, or match at all the wording here, that it couldn't be scored highly. But it was, this was kind of a guide to help the departments who self-scored first, and then the peer-reviewed teams. Our scoring rubric is really important to kind of think about this. So for each of those results we identified, scorers were supposed to ask themselves, was that program essential to the result? Did it increase a metric by more than 10%? Increase one of our strategic plan metrics by more than 10%? Could you live without that program? If you couldn't possibly live without the program, then that should have been scored a four. And then the next layer down was a three, where there was a strong influence on the result. And again, we had quantitative metrics there. So for each program and each result, and so we're talking about more than 700 programs and more than five results, we use this scoring rubric. And so if you had a strong influence, you're a three. If you had a fairly direct, but small impact, or an indirect impact, that would be a two. And then if there were a minor tangential impact on the result, that would be scored a one. And then we also looked at what we call basic program attributes. So there are other reasons why we have programs, and those include mandates. We have programs that provide equitable access to vulnerable populations, and we wanted to kind of be able to filter for those. We wanted to look at which programs had demand growing versus falling. And then lastly, we wanted, again, be able to filter for whether programs serve a large base of students, a small base of students, or a large group of employees, if we're talking about internal services versus a small group of employees. And there were definitions, as you can see, for four, three, two, one, and zero. So again, it wasn't, you know, we try to remove as much subjectivity out of the process as we possibly can. Of course, there still is a large degree of professional judgment. But again, we had definitions to guide those that were self-scoring first, and then the peer-reviewed teams that were looking at those self-scores. And so we just gave an example here of MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. And the point here is that, again, for each program, they are scored against each of those results. And they're not scored holistically, one, two, three, or four, as to their general importance. Scorers were asked to score, again, using that scoring rubric, MTSS, against the safe and supportive environment. So in this case, they scored at a three, which would indicate a strong influence on the result. Same with career and college readiness and academic growth. But the point is that each of those results on the top, each of those priorities were scored for multi-tiered systems support in every program. And so you can see, for well-rounded student, MTSS got a score of one, which would reflect a very minor influence on the result. Again, you might question that. I think it's fair to question it. And that's why we had the peer-reviewed teams to kind of check the scoring. And then the last priority here that MTSS was scored against was community and family partnerships. And again, it got a one. So again, a very systematic way of scoring versus, again, a more holistic way of scoring that I think some people, when they started this, thought, oh, I'll just give my program a four, or a three. No, it really breaks down into these smaller components. And so overall, here are the scores for MTSS, just as an example. And so again, you can see where the basic program attributes were scored as well. So there's nine different scores this program received. There's a compiled. The result scores are weighted three times the program attribute scores. Those were compiled and then calibrated on a zero-to-100 scale. And as we talked about before, and I think what you're going to see today is, just because a program may have scored more low, in a more lower quartile or one-fourth, doesn't mean, which it's on the chopping block necessarily, there still are most likely very valid reasons why that program should exist. But it starts the conversation with the departments as to whether there's a more efficient way of performing that function, whether perhaps fees can be charged, are there alternative approaches, maybe using volunteers, or interns, or what have you. So we looked at all these kind of questions when talking with departments, and they were asked to consider all these issues as well and analyze their programs accordingly. So again, that was a very quick run-through over the scoring process. But I think it's important for people maybe listening, or for yourselves, to know this is a very systematic process. As I said at the community forums, we're not infallible in scoring. And really, what we're talking about when we look at these programs, it starts to become all policy options for you. And you are the policymaking board for the district. So we recognize, you know, we've taken all the low-hanging fruit. There is none of that left. And what we're left with are very serious issues and options and consequences to a possible reduction to any of those programs. So to summarize, when we sent out budget instructions in early January, one of the kind of difficulties of using priority-based budgeting is, for each program, there's fractions of positions. And we can't delete fractions of positions. So department managers were asked to kind of operationalize what a reduction would mean. And that might mean pulling a fraction of a position that's working in a quartile-two program, but mostly in quartile-three or four. And so we asked department managers to consider, how would you go about presenting an option for a reduction based on the fact that you've got to put people, you know, in a, more neatly in whole numbers in terms of full-time equivalent positions? We asked departments to present options to save approximately 100% of quartile-four programs. And then we asked departments to come up with ideas to equate to roughly 50% of the total cost of quartile-three programs in their office or department. And that, you know, that's just a start. And, you know, again, this board can ask to, for us to tweak that and come back and look at it a different way. But that was our start in terms of providing budget instructions to departments. I should say that departments weren't constrained at looking at just quartile-three and four programs. We want departments to look at efficiencies in quartile-one and two programs. And many departments did that. And then the last step that we did was to go through the programs that did fall out in quartile-three and four. And there were a number of programs, and they're shown to you here for full transparency purposes, that we really didn't consider viable. And for whatever reason, the priority-based budgeting program and process did really fully account, in our view, for programs that helped to reduce risk, or that tended to be repair programs. So for instance, tire replacement fell out to quartile-four. But we're not going to not replace tires on vehicles, on buses. We're not going to let buses sit on the side of the road. So we did scrub through those programs and identify what we considered not to be truly viable options for you to consider. Another program that you'll see, for instance, is constituent responses, and the time spent on responding to members of the public with questions. Again, fell to quartile-four, but we felt like you can't really not do that. So we stripped that out of the options that you're going to look at. In terms of the total totals, then, that came out of the process, quartile-four options, you can see are a little over $9 million. And then in quartile-three options, and again, this is 50% of the total cost, approximately, or another, approximately $9 million. And so what you have here is a compilation of approximately $18 million of options. Again, we know none of them are good. None of them are things we want to do. But we wanted to give you plenty of options to look at. But that compares to the current deficit that we've quantified of $6 million. So, you know, the point here is that we're not asking the board to take scoop up all of those options. We've got more options identified than what we would need to balance our budget based on what we know today.
Questions on that? Okay. And again, just to reiterate what Mark just said, and has been said earlier, these are not recommendations. They are a series of options based on what came out of the process. And they are significantly more dollars than the district needs to reduce in order to balance our budget. So just to give everyone that context, this is not a recommendation that we eliminate everything on this list.
Right. So with that, begins our department presentations. And we'll just leave the dais and let the departments present each other's slides.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And thank you all for being patient and hearing this information again. It's important information, and it's critical that we all have the same context going into this process. So Dr. Parks, you're first up. Getting to throw the first pitch.
I'm just the warm-up.
That's...
All right. Good morning, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. First, want to acknowledge Mark and their team. All through this process, they met with us anytime and explained the process, and really worked hard to help us through it. worked hard to help us through it. So really wanted to make sure we acknowledged them. As we look at the Office of School Leadership, I would just remind us all, we are the conduit to our schools as well as to all departments. Over past budgets, we've been reduced from seven area superintendents down to four. On the table now is the possibility of an executive assistant. And to put it in simple terms, that would mean loss of direct customer service to not only our schools, but also our community and the departments that we work with. Going to two would be a detriment. So just wanted to be straightforward and brief about that. Are we going to take questions or just go on to the next?
We can certainly, I know if trustees have questions, they'll let us know. So we can keep going. Does anyone have any questions? Yes. Vice President Raymond.
I think I have a general question for all of these that, with an instance like this. So are these, are we talking about layoffs of employees in these cases? Or are they, how should we be thinking about this?
Yes. I mean, ultimately, there'd be a layoff if there's no attrition.
But I think we've had position reductions before, and we have been able to avoid actually laying people off. But we don't know if we could still do that.
But at this point, we're saying there will be potential layoffs.
Yep.
Okay. I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So by and large, I mean, there are a few options here identified that are non-personnel, but by and large, these are personnel costs. Last year, remember, we provided a multi-year kind of transition recommendation to you so that if a position were to be reduced, that position wouldn't actually be reduced until July 1 of 2020. And so we would still recommend that to you. So if there are, you know, options that you adopt and approve, if those positions are filled, that employee would have a year and four months before that position would be eliminated. And at least in the first year, this current year, when we've gone through that, I don't believe anyone hasn't relocated to another position. There may be one or two people who have not yet. But it, you know, we have enough turnover usually to allow some movement of personnel. But the plan, again, would be for any positions that are occupied that are identified for reductions, those wouldn't be deleted in the coming fiscal year. They'd be deleted for the fiscal year '21 budget, which takes effect July 1 of 2020.
Thank you for the clarification. And again, you know, thinking about, well, how does that save us in this next year? Again, this is staff dealing with our direction to eliminate the structural deficit. So in order to eliminate that ongoing expense, it becomes painful to have to actually reduce force at some point. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Parks.
Thank you. Next up is Chief Trevino.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Welcome.
All right. Good morning, Board. So I'll jump right in.
Oops, his microphone went off, JJ. I don't know. Oh, that's because you and I have problems.
We're back? Okay. So the quartile-four programs identified for school police were sports overtime and the victim advocate. The first one, the sports overtime, seems to be upfront a small dollar amount, $36,279. I've had extensive talks with Mr. Bozo from business about this. And in full transparency, that number upfront is small because of the backend way that overtime is taken by the officers or can be taken by the officers. So when the officers work an overtime event, they can take, so if they work two hours of overtime for a basketball game, they can actually take that in compensatory time and put it on the books. So that wouldn't show up necessarily in what this number you're seeing here is. The number that you're seeing here is actual overtime that's paid out upfront, which they are actually limited to taking with an agreement that's gone back years and years and years with the association, which is they can only take up to 50% of that in pay upfront. So they have to either take it 100% as comp time or split it 50-50 pay as comp time until they max out their comp time, at which point then they have to take it in pay. So the real, I guess, liability with the comp time is, they can earn it today, bank it, and then they have, in their contract, they can cash it out four times per year. So obviously, that can be cashed out at a later date, or it can be taken at a later date down the road. So just wanted to be transparent about the sports overtime, that it's not just that dollar amount that's attached to it. It's actually significantly more on the backend.
Chief, just before you move off that one, do we have any history of incidents at our sports events? I would think that it's pretty important that we have some sort of law enforcement presence.
Yeah. So with the sports events, it's one of those things we've said, it kind of, kind of the overarching portion of school police is, we can't measure what we can't measure, which is, we don't know how many incidents we prevent simply by being there, right? It's kind of like when you're driving down the road and you see a trooper on the freeway, everybody slows down, right? So we don't know how many accidents were prevented by that trooper being on 395 North at that particular moment, but we know everybody slowed down for those few miles while they were there, right? So that's kind of the analogy we've used with school police for a long time, is we can't put a number to that. We really don't know. We do know that we've had an increase in incidents with parents and officials this year with basketball. We had several where it got pretty heated. But again, we can't really tell you how many things that we have prevented.
Thank you.
And obviously, if...
Oh, you can finish.
I was just going to say, and obviously, the drawback there is if we were to cut that, then if there was an incident, the schools would have to contact basically 911, and then local agencies would have to respond to that call for service like any other call for service in the city or the county.
Does your department staff middle school sporting events, or is this just high school?
This is just high school events. And this isn't all high school events. The bulk of this is football and basketball. We do, on occasion, staff some softball, some baseball games if there's a problem. If we have teams that have had an issue, like earlier in the season, for instance, and, you know, we had some parents that had some problems, then generally, those schools' athletic directors will contact us and say, hey, can we get you to work this game? School X and Y are playing again, and we had some issues earlier in the year. As far as the middle schools, we do cover some of their basketball games because they fall during our normal working shifts. So we'll have our later officers check in on those patrol officers, but they're not actually assigned to those games.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the second item is the victim advocate. This is truly a one-person department. We have one victim advocate that represents the district. That victim advocate works very closely with the other victim advocates from Reno Sparks and Washoe County. When we have our students who are victims of crime, so she acts as a conduit between the outside agencies and the student and the families, as well as when we have crimes occurring here on our properties, she's the victim advocate that reaches out and works with that victim to get them oftentimes compensation through victims of crime or to walk them through the court process. A lot of the times, you know, families have never dealt with the court process before. They don't know what that looks like. She works closely with people that are getting, either wanting to get a temporary protection order, whether that's a student or a teacher, and then also walking them through that process as well, and then helping to facilitate the order of being enforced. Sometimes it's, you know, the order has to be served before it can be enforced, those types of things. So she acts as that conduit to make sure all those pieces are put in place so that if we do have an issue, that we know, one, we can verify that temporary protection order actually is in the system, and it's enforceable, and she, you know, is a liaison with that. So this is a program that we've had for the last several years. We worked a long time to get that program, and unfortunately, it is a one-person program. So if we were to cut the victim advocate, we lose that altogether. There's not another entity within the district that does what she does.
And is any of that funded by the state Victim of Crime Act grants?
It is not. She works closely with the grants, and she works closely with the other crime victim advocate agencies to bring grant money into our victims, but the actual position is not funded by any grant money.
Okay. Because I know that does fund it at the local governments. Yeah. Vice President Raymond.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think I mentioned it last year, but this is such a critical position, but at the Domestic Violence Resource Center where I work, all of our advocates, our victim advocates, are funded through the VOCA grant, through the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services. So that grant for next fiscal year is unfortunately due last month, so I'm not sure if we applied for it or not. But, and I think I was told that we did try to apply for it in the past, but I would just encourage us to keep trying, and if there's any work that we as trustees could maybe do to help, because I think that is, I mean, of all the things on this list, the most likely to be fully funded by a grant program.
Yeah, we've not been successful in the past in getting the position funded. I know Catherine's office has been successful in getting some VOCA money, which then our victim advocate works with Catherine to submit cases to get compensation back for the victims, but not actually for the position.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on those for the chief? All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Mathers, you're up next.
So I'm going to be joined by Andrea Sullivan, our Director of Procurement and Contracts.
Hi, Ms. Sullivan.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Want to take a question?
Okay. So I guess I have the only quartile-four program under the chief financial officer, so I'll start. So the program for us is the collection and maintaining and monitoring of insurance certificates. Right now, we devote about a .2 FTE to this. If we were really doing the best job we could on it, we probably, this is probably a halftime or three-quarter time job. It's fairly labor-intensive. But because it's quartile-four, the suggestion here is that we eliminate this program completely. That would mean we would no longer collect, maintain, seek new insurance certificates as old ones expire. I will say, in my 11 years here, I have not ever had to go back to a certificate that we've collected and pull it and provide it. But it would only take one thing to happen where we did not ensure that a contractor had insurance. Most of the time, they do. But if in a particular case, they did not have insurance, and we didn't collect it, and we didn't realize at the time that they didn't have it, then obviously, the district would be put at a substantial risk. So...
We do require it in our contracts.
We do require it, yes.
Yeah. So it is on the vendor to provide it. I mean, I know that's not airtight in terms of liability, but it is, it is on the vendor. It is a requirement that they provide.
Right. And at this point, we collect, verify, make sure all of the amounts are within our requirements, that their insurance is rated high enough, and we do all of that before we give them a PO or a signed contract, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't monitor that anymore at all.
Okay. All right. Were you going to add something, Mr. Mathers?
So when we talk about insurance, mostly what we're talking about here, I think that puts us at risk is professional errors and omissions. And so if an architect or another consultant made an error and then went bankrupt, the insurance policies are recourse. And so if that insurance lapses because we're not monitoring it, then that puts us at risk, right, due to an error of one of our vendors.
Okay. But it is, again, the vendor's responsibility to provide.
It is.
Okay. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I just want to get that clarified. So we don't have, so let's say we cut this. We don't have a check, but it's contractually mandated. They have insurance. Something happens, they make a mistake. Wouldn't we still be fine because it is a breach of contract versus, sorry, district, you didn't check, so it's your fault?
So we certainly could go after the company, but if it's a massive error, you know, they can certainly declare bankruptcy, and then we really have a very limited recourse, which is why we require the outside insurance policy so that, you know, in a worst-case scenario, we're protected. So we wouldn't, conceivable if we don't monitor that those insurance certificates are maintained, and they expire usually every year. If we're not maintaining, requiring that maintenance of insurance, there's the possibility we would be exposed.
And I think this is probably why it ended up in quartile-four. It is a, it's a calibration of our risk and our comfort with risk.
That's correct.
Okay. Great.
The next two items under quartile-three fall under business and finance, and what we're recommending or providing as an option is to delete a mid-manager position, a $100,000 position. We would essentially consolidate four departments into three. That position is currently vacant. So based on some of the unique experience of some of our folks, we think we can do that with fairly minimal impact. It certainly stretches staff, but in the grand scheme of things, again, this is a vacant position. It reduces a manager position. And then we also have an option to reduce half of an FTE position, half of a full-time position that performs a number of duties but includes project management.
And just as a standard, it would be great, as you have done, to identify for us those positions that are currently vacant, and maybe how long they've been vacant. How long has this one been?
A little over six months, and so we've tested out that employee who's kind of doing double duty, managing the position control department, working in budget, and they have performed well.
Okay.
And so we think we can do that.
Okay. But the deletion of the .5 FTE is not a vacancy?
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Cottle?
So the $118,762, it's in quartile-three, but that's 100% savings, not 50.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Keep going.
Okay. Back to me. So for those of you who don't know, I also oversee the warehouse, and several of those programs fell into quartile-three. So what we have up here is that we would eliminate two positions in the warehouse. And what that would mean to programs is that we would no longer do what we call relocation requests. So a relocation can be anything from moving a few boxes or a few pieces of equipment that are smaller in nature from one location to another, to we also assist departments when we make department moves, maybe from administration to another building. We move a program from one school to another school. But to put it in perspective, we did 2018 relocations in fiscal year 2018. And we began doing these many, many years ago as a cost savings measure so that we didn't have to outsource the moving.
Right.
But if these positions were to be eliminated, we would no longer do any relocations within the district. So the departments would have to figure out either a way to do it on their own, on their own time, in their own vehicles. We would have to outsource or pay for them. But just as the process goes, these shook out to be quartile-three programs. And if we had to eliminate those two positions, we would not do any more relocations in the district at all. We would not have the manpower to do it.
Okay. All right.
The other one, too, is the teachers' warehouse position. This is a warehouse driver as well. As you know, sometime, when you see nonprofits like the Red Cross, they fund their own positions out of their fundraising. In this case, the general fund funds this warehouse position. I will tell you that 2,199 shoppers came through the doors at the education warehouse in 2018. They sold or gave away 600 pieces of furniture and 12,000 groupings of items throughout the year. This is the warehouse where the public makes donations, but we have to staff it. Our person goes out a lot of times to the donors with a truck and picks up the goods. Sometimes the goods are delivered, but we have to check them in, we have to inventory them, we have to put values on them, we have to do audits every year. We have to be there when the shoppers come through and take the items, and we have to record that inventory transaction, both coming in and coming out. That is a full-time position. That came out in quartile-three. The suggestion here would be that either the Education Alliance funds it through their fundraising, or that the position is eliminated, but that would also eliminate the service in the entire warehouse.
Okay. Okay. Questions?
Yep. Vice President Raymond. Thank you.
I just, I don't know that we have any sense, but how likely is it that the Alliance would be able to find funders to support that?
I don't, I can't answer that. I don't know. Maybe David Lasik might be able to provide a better answer for that.
Thank you, David Lasik, chief of staff, for the record. I oversee Kendall and Skip, who is our director for the Education Alliance. So they do a lot of fundraising, but that money goes directly to schools. So for example, the Run for Education brings in approximately $150,000 every year, but that money goes in the form of grants to schools for physical education. So the money that they bring in does not pay for salaries of their staff. The district is fully supportive of their salaries. So the warehouse driver and then the three staff of the Education Alliance, the district fully funds.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Madam President, could I clarify one item? Trustee Cottle asked a question. I want to make it clear kind of how the budget instructions worked. So what you don't see here are quartile-three programs where we're not making cuts. And so what we ask departments to do is to come up with ways to, options to reduce costs of the total amount of quartile-three programs by 50%. So in our case, quartile-three programs might amount to $750,000. So what you're seeing here is how we got to 50%. So the priority-based budgeting process is kind of focused on programs, and so we looked at individual programs and what we felt like were the least impactful if we couldn't do them. them, if you, I mean, even though they are impactful. So you're not seeing programs that were identified where we're not proposing an option, if that makes sense.
Mark, can I ask just an overall question? How many positions do we have that have been vacant for, you know, six months or so?
That I'd have to get to you. That I don't have.
Can we get that, you know, during this process, not today necessarily, but during the process? And, and have you looked at cost savings from holding positions vacant longer, and are those incorporated already?
They are not. We are looking very seriously and deeply into that issue, into vacancies. I think HR is running some reports for us right now. So hopefully, I can come back to you in March or April with that.
And I do want to say to the staff, I know that vacant positions, you know, we, we have had such drastic cuts over the last several years that losing any position in any department is a hardship on everyone else who is there. We absolutely recognize that. And if it comes down to having to eliminate positions that are necessary versus extending vacant positions for longer, we may have to make some of those decisions. But I just, if we could also add that to our list of options and information to consider. Okay, and we have, let's see, on the attachment D that was with the, with the budget materials, we have completed page one of 17 pages, so we need to, we need to keep moving. Okay, thank you so much. Did you have something, Vice President Raymond? Oh, okay. Okay, Ms. Byersdorf, and Ms. Lepinta, and our academics team.
Good morning, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Again, Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer. I'm joined here with three of my amazing directors. To my immediate left is Kendra Fox, who is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Then we have Dr. Saul Wazaki, who is the Director for Professional Learning, and Sheri DiMartino, who is the Director for our Gifted and Talented Gate Department. So we, we have several pages of information to go over with you this morning, and we are going to start off as well with the quartile four programs that myself and the team have identified for potential consideration to help ease our budget challenges. So we're going to start off first with Kendra talking about potential reductions to our middle school initiative support programs.
Kendra Fox, for the record, good morning. Several years ago, under Superintendent Martinez, there was a push for a middle school initiative program. This was supposed to be a short-term program to give the schools a choice of curriculum in different areas to meet whatever needs they had at the time. Many of the schools chose the Springboard English Language Arts curriculum, because as you well know, our curriculum in all subject areas is behind in adoption. And other schools chose the Project Lead the Way, which is a STEM-science-engineering-type program. This program has continued for several years past when the original intent was the schools that are using it are continuing to use it. And so if this program was eliminated, they would have to, for the English Language Arts, they would have to jump back on what the other middle schools are using in the district. And the Project Lead the Way is a supplement that schools are just using in different ways, so, and it's relatively inexpensive. It's less than $900 per school, so if they wanted to use it, they may be able to fund it themselves.
And the ELA that we just, I'm sorry. Oh, the ELA that we just adopted was for elementary?
Kindergarten through fifth, yes, yes.
All right.
Do you want me to just keep going?
Yep. Oh, we do have a question.
You said $900 per school. Is that just for Lead the Way, or is that for?
Yeah, for just Project Lead the Way. The rest of the cost is the Springboard English Language Arts curriculum, which is consumable, so we pay for it every year out of that budget, and that is the majority of probably 170,000 of that, maybe more.
Okay. Do, is there any sense of how, how many schools use it? Do you have a?
There, I think approximately five or six middle schools use it, and they seem happy with it.
I saw it being used. It's really cool.
We do, just to add a quick thing on that, we do have elementary schools that use it that pay for it out of their own general budget also, for its sixth grade also. Read 180 is a reading intervention program for grades six through 12, and it's at a handful of our middle and high schools for students that struggle in reading. Last year, in budget reductions, we eliminated the position that supports this program, and this, this $50,000 is just the cost to have the program housed on our servers. So we pay that every year to, to the company that, that owns Read 180.
And again, do we have a sense of how deep the, or how broad the scope is of people who use this?
It's, no, it's a, it's a voluntary program, and kids are just scheduled into it as needed. They can kind of come and go at the middle and sixth grade and middle school level and high school. It's a semester-long class. I could pull numbers of students for you, but I don't have that information today.
Okay, I think that, that'll be useful to us, too, as we, as we look at these. And I do want to clarify that, you know, our job is every student by name and face to graduation. It is not most students. It is every, and that requires that we also remember the needs of the smaller groups of students that may have special challenges. So this is a, I recognize that one of the criteria in our performance, or our priority-based budgeting is how many people does it affect? And so those things that are to smaller groups of students rated lower, but it doesn't mean they're not, you know, 1,000% valuable to those students, so, okay. Thank you.
Next on the list is the Destiny Library and Resource Manager Program. This program is at every one of our elementary, middle, and high schools. It manages all of our library books and our textbooks at the middle and high school level. It manages checkouts, check-ins, late fees. It sends emails to parents when the student doesn't return the book. It allows us at the district level, when we get a complaint about a library book at, at a school, I can look and see how many, how many schools have that book. I can reach out to see how many checkouts it has. So it's, I think there was an email that came from one of the librarians and said that if the program was eliminated, it would be similar to losing Infinite Campus, and that's, it's similar student information. Student, we take information from Infinite Campus and put it in there, so it does house student information, and it, it just basically manages everything. The other thing it does is it curates resources, so students all have their own account, teachers have accounts, they can do research out on the internet, or out through books, or through different resources, and kind of pull them together into one spot. It allows teachers to recommend resources to students. If they see a book that a student might want to read, they can send it to them through that and, or create class sets of things for students to access. So it's really a valuable program for our libraries. I'm sure a question you have is what would we replace it with? And everything has a cost that is, that's similar to this. And so in addition to the amount of time it takes to set up the program and to catalog all the library books.
How long have we had Destiny in our libraries?
We've had it for, I would say, around seven or eight, maybe nine years. It's been quite a while. We've had the textbook version as kind of an offshoot for a little bit longer, and it just keeps track of all the textbooks. So even when a student leaves a school, we can see where that textbook went. If they don't turn it in at one school, we can help, hopefully, find it at another school.
I come from a family of librarians, and I can't imagine how we would function without some service equivalent to this. And I just, I don't know how we would function without it. That's just one trustee talking. Okay. Yes, Trustee Cottle?
So for Destiny, it's $115,000 for the subscription for all of our schools.
Every year.
Okay, thank you.
Or more or less, a little over $1,000 a school, when you come right down to it. Yep.
All right, we are now going to move over.
Oh, wait, Trustee Calvert?
Oh, I just wanted to know if you did have another option for the Destiny, or had you looked at something else?
There, when we initially got Destiny, we looked at other options, and we, we receive, you know, vendor calls from other options. We haven't really looked into it seriously because, in the past, because we've been happy with Destiny and they keep, that their customer service is outstanding. So we could certainly, if, if this goes away, we would have to look for something.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fox.
All right, now we're going to shift over to Sheri to talk a little bit about the potential reduction of a, part of an FTE or a teacher allocation.
Hi, Sheri DiMartino, for the record. I'm going to talk about the high school advisory. This is directly related to our high school facilitator position. Last year was our first year with the advisory. When we looked at our high school students, we had approximately 1,400 students that were not receiving GT services, and we needed to address that critical concern. The advisory came out of that, so Ms. Lombard goes out to school sites, the high school level, working with counselors, working with administrators, working with community to address the needs of our gifted students there. She tracks gifted students' grades, the behavior, the emotional support. She attends the MTSS meetings. She works with appropriate coursework to make sure they have a successful pathway to graduation. She is the liaison with the Gifted Office and TMCC to make sure any student at the high school level, regardless of their location, can get advanced math in dual credit, in dual enrollment, so that they can graduate with dual credits at the college level. Most importantly, she has been our advocate out in the field for GT endorsements. We recognize, again, that our high school students do not have GT-endorsed teachers, and through our grant, we would like to have as many GT-endorsed teachers at every grade level, including high school. So she goes out and she in, has meetings with teachers to talk about GT endorsements, so eventually, those 1,400 students will have a GT-endorsed teacher down the road. So again, this position, it's not a model of service, isolated, it is part of her job that she does for the high school students.
Okay, okay. All right.
So before we move to quartile three, I just want to stress again, the team worked very hard to identify as close to 100% reductions in quartile four as we possibly could.
And before you go on, we do have some public comment on gifted and talented, so maybe this would be a good time to open that. Thank you, JJ. Sanghar. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, hi. My name is Sanghar Mukhavad. This is my first time speaking.
Well, welcome.
So I'm speaking here as a parent. I have a daughter in the third grade in the SWAS program, and so I have seen a sort of shift in her compared to sort of when she was in the second grade, compared to the third grade. She is much more enthusiastic about school now. She enjoys, sort of say, what's happening in school. It seems like this, she's just more into the, the curriculum. And my sense, and I'm not sure, obviously, this is just one person, is that she was somewhat bored last year, and this year, sort of say, given the challenges that they're facing in the curriculum, she's simply more interested in it. And, and when I saw essentially the, the list, essentially the potential budget impacts, and I saw that there could be essentially a lottery where students could be placed into that program or may not be placed into that program depending upon essentially the outcome of the lottery, I was really scared. I cannot really think of, sort of say, a situation where we would one day find out through a lottery that, okay, now we don't have that program anymore, and we have to go back to someone, something else. And, and, and no disrespect to, sort of say, the other curriculums, it's just that probably different curriculum fits sort of different children. All children are different, and sort of say, I think that the GT program and the SWAS program sort of recognizes that, that, that children are different, and we need to sort of provide them with different curriculum. And I think, sort of say, this curriculum has been sort of really good for her in the last six months or so. I, as I said, mentioned earlier, I have seen the change, that how more enthusiastic she is. So I would sort of say, request you to sort of really carefully think, and I know that you would, but i-if you could essentially, sort of save that program, or at least, sort of say, figure out a way so that all the kids can get essentially the, the curriculum and, and the facilities that they're receiving, so that, sort of they can continue on this path where they would be sort of interested and excited about their studies, as opposed to just thinking that, okay, this is one more day in school. So anyway, that was all my comment. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay.
I'd turn it back over to Kendra to start us off on our quartile three options.
Thank you, Debbie. Kendra Fox, for the record. The very first one on quartile three is advanced placement support. So our district, for, I would guess, the last 20 years or so, it was in place when I was in the classroom a long time ago. So we provide teachers who teach advanced placement courses, an extra stipend to teach the course. If they teach one course, they get $600. If they teach two courses, they get $1,200, and thereafter, it, it ends at $1,200. So it, it has to be two different courses, so AP Statistics, AP Calculus would be two separate courses, not two sections of AP Calc. This is for work that, that is, the intent originally was for professional development, although since then, it's sort of morphed into, as our district has had a focus on advanced placement, dual credit, things like that, it's sort of morphed into work teachers do outside of the classroom for, with students. And so it provides a standard stipend to all teachers who teach the courses, regardless of the amount of work they do with students. And it's not in the negotiated agreement, but it's been in place for so long that, that's why I think it says collective bargaining.
And do we know how many? I'm sorry.
It's $168,000 a year. It has remained, it was growing steadily and has kind of remained at that place at several hundred teachers, at that $600 or $1,200.
And our advanced placement participation, though, has increased significantly, has it not?
It's, it's pretty sta, uh, flat right now, but it, it increased pretty steeply for a while, and then it's kind of just stayed flat, I think, with some other options. Students have, they have lots of options now between dual credit and advanced placement to get that rigorous curriculum.
Okay, Trustee Cottle?
So if this were to be cut, it wouldn't eliminate AP, it would eliminate the stipend, which would probably eliminate the extra work sessions that teachers put on, essentially the extra legwork by the teacher to help these students prepare and ultimately succeed on the AP exam. Is that what I'm getting from this?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, library services. So as you, as you probably know, we have librarians at all of our schools. In the middle and high school, we have certified teacher librarians, and at the elementary level, we have classified librarians or ESP librarians. The middle and high school positions are our teachers, as I said. They do teach lessons for students. They collaborate with teachers to help support the curriculum in the classroom. They're often the professional development providers for the school. They teach 21st century learning skills, they teach social-emotional learning skills, they do so much more than just check out books, as, as sometimes people think that that's what a librarian does. But I would encourage you to visit some of our libraries, if you haven't already, and really talk to the librarians about all of the work that they're doing with students on a daily basis. They, they've off, I've seen a lot of pictures lately on Twitter about the amount of students in the libraries, and those libraries are packed. This proposal eliminates the certified librarian positions and replaces This proposal eliminates the certified librarian positions and replaces it with a classified librarian position, which, as you know, has some impact on the teaching, but it also has some other impacts that I can explain if you're interested. The elementary school positions, we looked at, we looked at, similar to what we do for music. When we have a smaller school, we share music teachers. So, we did the same thing with the 10 smallest elementary schools, and worked to combine those positions, so that would eliminate five classified library positions and create a sharing situation. With that, it would limit the number of hours that the librarian could be open, or the library could be open, and it would also limit school schedules because the schools rely on the library time for students, because 100% of our elementary students see the librarian every week in, in the elementary schools. So, it would limit the school schedule significantly to, to create those sharing situations.
One thing that I, I recall from years ago, when healthcare was going through some cost reductions, rather than eliminating registered nurses, they eliminated the lower skilled level of nurses because a registered nurse can do more, can do all of those other things, as well as offering a higher level of service. And I sort of analogize this to that, that I, you know, from my perspective, the certified librarian can provide a higher level of service. So, just something to think about. Trustee Caudill.
Yeah, I don't know. This might be a question for you, or maybe Superintendent jumps in on this. If we know anything about what's going on with the legislature, I know it's pretty new about potential legislation that impacts school libraries in our K-12 system in the state. Have we looked at that? Have we seen the impact it's going to have on us if we can't make cuts like this? Or if we have to actually increase services to follow state law? Have we looked at that yet?
That has not been determined yet in our, in our update, so that's still being worked through the, the bill draft.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Vice President Raymond?
I'll just take this time to thank everyone who's emailed us over the last few months. It feels like maybe a month. But I think having, I volunteer in my daughter's elementary school library. I have a better understanding of what a classified librarian looks at that level, but the information we've received has been very helpful in understanding that difference between classified and certified and documents, and someone created a book, and, I mean, it's been so helpful to me to better understand. So I thank everyone who took time to send us that information.
Thank you. Important. And again, you know, we know this is a tremendously stressful conversation for, for all of our folks to be having. And again, there's no one at this dais that wants to see anything reduced, so, okay.
Next on the list is a math support position, housed in curriculum instruction. This position is, the person is retiring this year, and so we just would not fill the position if not, if this, if this line item was eliminated. They support kindergarten through fifth grade math right now. They go out and work with teachers on a daily basis in implementing the Bridges and Envision math curriculum. So that support would be reduced by losing this person also. The next several line items.
Kendra, before you go on, how long has that one been vacant?
It's not vacant. She's, she's retiring this year, yes.
You're right, retiring, got it, okay.
So, the next several lines, the kindergarten science support, social studies support, and then on to the next page, world language support. Those are just cuts to my general budget. It, that, this reduction as a whole would just reduce the amount of work we can do with teachers in just, in various ways. We, we sub teachers out to, to come to classes. We pay them stipend to do work for us, to, to help us write curriculum and things like that. So it would just reduce my general fund budget and reduce the amount of work that, that my staff does with teachers, or the ability to do it for pay or sub, sub release, so.
Which, again, this is Deborah Byersdorf. If I can just add, and I'm sure Kendra would concur, was a, a real important consideration for us as well in reducing support, professional learning and that, to our teachers.
And I will say, one of the things we heard at the community budget forums from, from teachers is that they, they really value the face-to-face kind of conversations they can have in their professional development, and hope that we can find some more stimulating ways for them to have other professional development, that there was a lot of discussion about how might we save money in professional development for teachers, and, but that the, the opportunity to have conversation and collegial dialogue in those professional learning committees, communities is important.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Sorry, quick question on those support ones. So those are employees that, the, the position doesn't necessarily go away. The time spent would just be diverted to other programs?
If, if they would still do the same, yes. So no employee reduction, but they would just, we would just, one of the things we started to do is to go and work at schools with teachers, and, and the schools then release the teachers and, to work with us. Or we've been trying to work with schools in a different way, rather than pulling them out to us. And so, and that seems to have been working, which is why these numbers can be cut. So, they would still do the same work. We would just have to look for other ways, as President Simon Holland alluded to, to, to do that work.
Right, we're going to shift over to Dr. Zaki now, and this is an example of where we looked at other level of programming Quartile I and Quartile II, and she'll explain our potential reduction here.
Okay.
President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, trustees, Salwa Zaki, Professional Learning Director, for the record. The history of the implementation specialists, who are teachers on special assignment on full release, supporting other teachers, and in many cases, also some of our administrators, is that around 2010, 11, when we still had area superintendents and program directors, there were 32 implementation specialists identified, eight in each of the four regions at the time, who were deployed by the area superintendents and program directors as, as they saw fit out to schools. The number of ISs has increased just a little bit over the next couple of years to a maximum of 35. And we had, over the years, different formulas for providing support out to schools, with those schools earning one and two stars, having more time allocated from our ISs than the schools who had earned three, four, and five stars. Over the years, and with the budget, budget cuts, especially over the last few years, the number of implementation specialists has been reduced significantly. The, the most, one of the most significant reductions was down to about 17, so kind of cut in half. And then, this, this past year, we're down to three implementation specialists. So with that very small number who are out in schools, we made the determination that they would support, at this time, only our students in the accelerate, our acceleration schools. And so, we designed a system of support where the team of three now goes out together on a quarterly basis to those schools to provide a variety of supports. They work very closely with the, with the administration at each school to figure out what is the, what is the highest need among the teachers at that school. So, the, the schools, obviously, are like Natchez, Duncan, Elcrest, Lincoln Park, Lemelson, Sun Valley, and, and Desert Heights, and I may have missed one. But, so, they met with the principals at the beginning of the year and said, would you like support during the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth, and in what areas? So, they observe teachers, they provide feedback, they do model lessons, and then observe teachers implementing those same strategies that they learned, provide feedback to, to the teachers for those lessons. They also provide a lot of support in the PLC time, the time when the teachers are meeting as teams, grade levels or departments, to plan for curriculum instruction and assessment. So if we reduce the three FTEs for those positions, we would eliminate that support altogether.
Wow. Vice President Raymond?
Sorry. So, when I've been at some of our schools, I've met implementation specialists. Do some of the schools use title funding to pay for that position?
The positions we're talking about here are the three district-funded positions. Yes, some principals fund coaches, instructional coaches, or implementation specialists out of grant, a variety of grant funding, yeah.
So this wouldn't, this decision wouldn't impact those? It would just be the?
No, it would be the district.
District ones, okay, thank you.
Funded ISs, yes.
I-if I could add, though, just for further clarification, so, so Title I funding, for example, that's a site decision in collaboration with that school's area superintendent on, on how they craft together their title budget, so it would be up to the site whether or not they wanted to include a site implementation specialist or instructional coach that Salwa talked about.
Okay, thank you. Pretty dramatic cuts in that area. Okay?
Okay, thanks, Salwa. I'm going to turn it over to Sheri now, who's going to walk us through potential reductions to our gifted and talented programming.
Sheri DiMartino, for the record. I'd like to begin, though, with the gifted and talented, even though it is not listed on here. It is our itinerant program. That is the pull-out and the collaborative program that you heard about earlier. When we look at our state guidelines in the NAC on 3881.150, we know that we have to service, if we choose to service our gifted students, they need to be with at least 150 minutes per week with a GT-endorsed teacher. The itinerant model is the only model that we currently have that actually will do that service for the students. So that is our baseline for instruction. What we're going to talk about next is what is above and beyond, what the basics are for gifted services. When we look at our SWAS program, our SWAS program identifies our profoundly and highly gifted students at a cognitive score of 99 percentile or higher. We currently have four locations in the district for our elementary, for the profoundly gifted students. With that reduction, we are looking at a possibility of taking nine FTEs and bringing them down to six with a reduction of five. We would have to then just band our grade levels together in three, four, and five. We know that we are removing our sixth grade slowly, moving with the model that the district is going with, the sixth grade going to the middle school level. When we look at our middle school magnet program, that is offered to any identified GT student. They do not need to be highly gifted or profoundly gifted, but we do know that a lot of our SWAS students move into the middle school level because we do have that advanced rigorous instruction for the students. Bringing the reduction from four sites that we currently have to two sites, we will then revert back to a situation we had three years ago, where we had a lot of students on a waiting list, waiting to get into the magnet program. Currently, we don't have that waiting list. Basically, if a student wants to get into the magnet program, and they meet the criteria, they do get into the program. If we do go to two sites, we're looking at approximately 200 students that would now be placed on a waiting list and not have that opportunity for that service. If we go on to the high school institute and phase out that completely, we are looking at students who will no longer have the opportunity to have the four-year English pathway that concludes with the AP capstone. We would not be able to offer them the integrated Math III course. And again, that comes out of the magnet school, where we are doing advanced, an advanced curriculum with them. So we need to have something in place for those students. We currently have a GT high school counselor. That means that counselor knows about GT, has taken courses about GT to best meet the needs and their social-emotional needs. That would no longer be available to those students. Overall, we are jeopardizing the well-being of our high school students. We already know we have a critical need to get more GT-endorsed teachers at the high school level, because we do have 1,400 kids that are not attending the high school institute. But those students that are at the institute, they are excelling. They're getting into West Point. They are getting into Ivy League schools, and we know it's because that pathway started down in elementary, went to middle, and went to high school. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Yes, Trustee Caudill?
Is there a way to at least make the program more efficient to reduce costs while avoiding a lottery system?
Are we talking, which one are we talking?
So, but for both, elementary and middle.
Okay. Currently, right now, with the magnet program, we do have to look at the coursework and the advanced coursework that the students are doing, and we need to have teachers that are licensed to teach those items at the school. We have pretty high numbers at all of our magnet locations. It is possible, in the future, to maybe consolidate some schools, but when you're going to consolidate, we also need the courses that the students need, and we have to stay within the NAC of 22 to one for a case, I'm sorry, for a classroom size. So we look at how many students are at that school location with a 22 to one ratio.
I know with Quartile III, the charge was to cut in half. If you looked at going from four sites to three sites, elementary and middle, how much of a difference are we talking?
Would you like, okay.
Yeah, I, if I could go ahead and thank Sheri and jump in there again, Deborah Byersdorf. We've discussed that, you know, if we were able to eliminate, well, let me back it up. First of all, you know, given our charge, we did try to get to the 50%, but we did talk if there were an opportunity to maybe look at, you know, with the next couple of years, phasing out one of those programs. I will use one of our elementary SWAS programs as an example. Whitehead Elementary is seeing a decline in enrollment, and that might be a natural place to look at for a reduction. So we do that as a matter of course anyways. Sheri and I have been able to work together for two years, and I think it was last school year, we started talking about if Whitehead's numbers don't remain the same or continue to grow, we may have to look at doing something different. So, roundabout way of answering your question, yes, I mean, it is definitely something we, we, we could and should consider.
Thank you.
And of course, it, it is a challenge when the numbers reduce. That's taking up space in the school that can put, you know, can put pressure on other classrooms to be overcrowded so that that space is afforded to, to kids that are, particularly with the SWAS programs. Okay, lots of things to balance, and thank you for looking at all of them. Okay?
One, one more.
Okay.
And then we're, then we're finishing up AO or Academic Olympics.
Gee, I thought I was going to get away. Okay, I'm so sorry. Sheri DiMartino, for the record. So for Academic Olympics, this, this is a reduction option for the FTE. This goes back with our high school facilitator that I spoke with earlier. One of their positions is to oversee the Academic Olympics. This is not only for GT students, but for all high school students to participate in the competition. We have run it for quite a few years. We are slowly growing the competitions to go to state. We're pretty excited about that. But if this was eliminated, this is part of that FTE, and we would no longer be able to support finding locations and venues and getting everything situated for the competitions, finding judges for the competitions. This would all fall on the site, on the school sites to now do.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. Thanks very much. Mr. Lasik.
Good afternoon. David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record, and with me is Dr. Bryn Lapenta, over Student Accounting, and Robert Sidfer, Chief Innovation and Information Officer, over Information Technology. I will speak to Education Alliance, as Kendall and Skip couldn't be here today. This actually was about 16,000 or 15,000. This actually was about 16,000 or 15,000, 16,000. That resulted in quartile four, but as was stated earlier, it's hard to reduce a fraction of a person, and this resulted in a fraction of just one FTE that does this work. The P-16 Advocacy Council is a subset of the Education Alliance, and it's a group of private citizens that meet to further the work and collaborate with the district and higher education to make sure that there's a bridge between K-12 and higher education. So this would be a filled position. It's a secretary within Education Alliance.
And how does the Washoe K-12 Foundation fit into that picture?
Washoe K-12 Foundation is its own organization, and no district funding goes towards that. The district completely funds Education Alliance, as I mentioned earlier. So there's three plus the warehouse driver. So there's the secretary, coordinator, and the director directly in Education Alliance, and then there's the warehouse person who works at the teacher's warehouse. That's also part of Education Alliance. So this elimination would directly impact Education Alliance because it would mean that the director and the coordinator would have to do more of the administrative day-to-day duties. And so, for example, all of the checks that get cut to schools and all the fundraising that happens, the basic clerical support would then be done by the director and the coordinator, thus taking time away from them, from their own fundraising opportunities and work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, from here, we'll move on to information technology, and I'll have Robert walk through these.
Good morning, Robert Sidford, chief information and innovation officer. Basically, what you see there is Mr. Mathers mentioned that there are a number of programs that are, were identified in the PBB process that actually serve as significant risk elements or provide.
Yeah, just one second.
Oh, pardon me.
The reason you're seeing us looking confused is we must be missing a page because we don't have all of these in the document.
Because of the board services and HR, we don't have an IT. I had it here.
Okay, let's see. All right.
Yeah, I would just say refer to the online version. The printed version might be out of order.
Yeah, here it is on the, okay. Yeah, it's just not in what was provided ahead of time. It's on page 47 of the PowerPoint. Okay. No, it's not in the spreadsheet. Okay. Yeah, yeah, those of us that printed ours out so we could make notes are scrambling, sorry.
Sorry. I think the reason it wasn't included in the spreadsheet, Robert is about to address it, but I'll address it quickly. Priority-based budgeting didn't account for risk, so risk to the organization. There is no score for adverse risk to the district. And so while these might be low-scoring quartile three or four programs, the elimination of these program actually, programs actually creates significant risk to the district. And Robert can explain more, but a lot of this is network security. So we have three people in network security that the majority of this represents. If we eliminate any or all of this for network security, we're actually opening our system up to hacking and vulnerability phishing, ransomware attacks, that type of thing. So priority-based budgeting didn't account for that. VoIP is our phone systems, so that's direct support to the phones we have in schools, the phones in teachers' classrooms. That directly affects parents, that affects the safety of our schools because a teacher would no longer be able to call for help if they needed it. Again, it doesn't, PBB didn't address those types of things. So we're not suggesting or supporting elimination of these, but that's why I think it skips in the, in the spreadsheet because they weren't included, but they're included in the PowerPoint.
Okay. And, and we also have a IT audit that has indicated that we actually need to increase staffing in IT rather than decrease, so.
Incorrect. Robert can address that as well. Our, as I said, we only have three people who perform network security, and that's low. And so our system is very vulnerable for hacking and phishing and those types of things. We're currently doing network penetration testing. We're getting ready to have an outside company purposely attack our system and see how vulnerable it is, in addition to the external IT audit that was just recently done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, Robert, we just had to catch up with you here.
No, absolutely. For the record, Robert Sidford, chief information and innovation officer. So what David was talking about there, basically all of the programs there, with the exception of voiceover IP, are security program-related programs, so that would, those would fall into that category. And with a program like that, it really is a holistic look at, at IT security and cybersecurity. So all of those are interdependent on each other. With regard to, pardon me.
And if I could just, if I could just add on the voiceover IP, that's, I, in my limited understanding, that is absolutely the least expensive way to handle our telephone services in our schools. So we have to have phone service in the classrooms, and voiceover internet protocol is the cheapest way to do it.
For the record, Robert Sidford, that's, that's correct. That's an industry standard for that exact purpose, and that is the vast majority of our phones in our, in our district. It actually represents 6,290 phones at the moment across the district. So you can imagine the impact of us not supporting that program. We have explored the possibility of contracting for those services. I can tell you that, although obviously we haven't gone through any kind of RFP process or anything like that, our best estimates are that that would cost us around $1.6 million a year for, for outsourcing that service.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to 21st Century Learning, this, these programs here represent a portion of our 21st Century Learning department that supports schools in a, in a variety of ways. Largely, the general funded portion of that department deals with a lot of issues around making sure that our online and digital tools are compliant with federal laws, FERPA, SIPA, and COPA. I can go into those if you'd like me to, but there's an increased awareness that, obviously, maintaining the security of our student data, making sure that our students are safe while they're online and using digital tools is something that we need to be very mindful of as a district, and so that, that program supports making sure that we're using tools that are compliant with those, those laws, and providing guidance to teachers, training to teachers, primarily resources to teachers around those, those services. This also, our, these also support our digital citizenship curriculum, so that is a SIPA required, the requirement that actually ensures that we remain eligible for a variety of federal funding, including our E-Rate program. And these also are programs that will support the digital learning in our new schools that we are currently building.
Okay.
Back to me. So board services, does, again, represent, start with a question on that?
No, no, I just wanted to thank Robert because I know he's done.
Okay, sorry.
I mean, I don't mean you're done, I just mean you're, got to be really careful about language today. You finished that particular presentation.
Thank you. So, board services, I have three people who support the Board of Trustees and 17 district public committees that are subject to open meeting law. This represents a fraction of a FTE. So even though we would eliminate spotlight on success, that is a portion of somebody's time. There are other items associated at the bottom, such as developing training and that types of things. So we, yes, or earlier this week, we put on a training for all the staff who work on committees, and that touched on legal issues of creating agendas, minutes, and openly, open meeting law requirements. So again, that's a representation of somebody's time. Civil rights compliance have to do with, again, a portion of somebody's time who works on board policy. And media relations, again, is a portion of somebody's time who supports the Board of Trustees on media events, or talking points, or media trainings, that type of thing. So while these programs scored low, it is, again, a portion of people's time. So eliminating somebody in the board services department would adversely affect the district in compliance with open meeting law and the 17 committees that those three people support. And again, it's hard, priority-based budgeting didn't account for the risk associated with elimination of position. These items, I don't think were included. These are directly under the Board of Trustees. These are, again, two people who do this work around board communications, board community engagement, event planning, responding to constituents, helping you all visit schools, and the support of the Student Advisory Council. Some of that's, you know, in our strategic plan, some of that's work you directly all do, and that's the work we do to support you all. So that's two FTEs represented there. Student accounting, I will have Bryn speak to those areas, but again, priority-based budgeting did not account for what would happen if we eliminated positions within her office because there are legal requirements and audit requirements associated with her work.
Thank you. Bryn Lapenta, for the record, and I work in student accounting. I've included several examples of the support to schools provided by student accounting, whereby the reduction of any resources would adversely cause risk to the district. These services are above and beyond some of the basic work products of student accounting. There are more prescribed in law, such as registration of students, fulfillment of records, fulfillment of special education records, accurate record-keeping in Infinite Campus, and student counts necessary to obtain apportionment or funding. So the administrative codes that you see before you in the PowerPoint are all the ones that deal with enrollment, counts, attendance, school days, calendars, and withdraw. And they also deal with how credits are earned and applied toward graduation, how diplomas are issued, and other items such as dual credit.
So Bryn, if I could just stop there, so just to clarify, even though the program itself is not mandated, the, the requirements exist, and we have to maintain our compliance with those requirements.
I would say it's tangential, tangential, because, for example, one of the things that came about out of the last legislative session was the college and career-ready diploma that had about 24 different points that had to be met in order to obtain the diploma. So we don't, we write the procedures on how to issue those diplomas. We develop tools with Infinite Campus to make sure that we're doing them correctly because the last thing that we want is to have one school issuing a diploma one way and another school issuing a diploma another way. We want all of the pieces of NAC and statute to be implemented with integrity and consistency. That doesn't happen if you don't support schools, and by support, I mean not only answer questions, but also check to make sure schools are doing. So there was another thing that was added this year, which was by Assembly Bill 117, and that required that students had to meet a certain level of competency as seniors if they were to be excluded from full-time enrollment. Because I don't know if you're aware or not, but since the beginning of time, seniors only had to take four classes instead of taking six. Okay, so I'm sure anybody who went to school remembers that. But last year, they changed it so that seniors had to have an exemption. Some of the exemptions are provided by only my staff directly, and we had to monitor the schools because if a student doesn't have an exemption and the Department of Education finds that out through audit or drawing a report from Infinite Campus, they then deem that student as not full-time, and we don't get paid for full-time students. So with 5,000 seniors, that puts our district at a very big risk. So each one of my staff has four schools that they monitor to make sure that, that the school, students either have a full schedule or they have an actual exemption.
So there's a huge fiscal impact to that.
Correct. I would also say that I'm super proud of the fact that we didn't lose one student in the October audit, and that's a direct function of my department also with the support for schools. And part, the last thing that was in this was the Infinite Campus Governance Board. So the Infinite Campus Governance Board is a state council that makes all the rules for Infinite Campus and how it'll be applied across the state. We get a vote on that board, and if we don't participate in that board and you don't vote, you can't complain. So we need, we have kept them from making some serious mistakes, such as marking students in a way that would be directly opposite of how IDEA would want you to mark them, which would leave us vulnerable for due process. And so those kinds of things, we have to participate in, in order to be able to keep the district from having risk.
Okay, and we're glad you're on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions before we move on?
Nope. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
We'll move on to the Office of Human Resources, and with me is our chief human resources officer, Emily Ellison.
Welcome, Ms. Ellison. Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the Board of Trustees. Like many, excuse me, like many of the departments that have spoken before me, within human resources, our programs cross over a number of positions. And so as we look to make the reductions or changes that we needed to do in order to, to do our part in priority-based budgeting, we had to really look at how programs could be delivered and the impacts that those would have, kind of separate from the positions that would be impacted. And so we've made a continual effort anyway to look at aligning resources and make sure that we're doing our work in the most efficient way possible. But as I talk through some of the specific impacts, you'll see that there's not always a clear correlation between the change that we're making and the programs that are necessarily listed. Of course, by the end, I hope that I will help clarify how we got to that place, but if you have any questions, please let me know. As we looked at each of the programs, there are some that will continue to exist simply because they are very closely related to other programs that did score highly in the priority-based budgeting process. So exit and transfer surveys is a great example of that. Collecting the data on why people leave our district or why they change schools is an important data point that we use to support our educator equity plan, which is something that's required by the state. And so as we look to realign resources, there may be a service level impact in terms of the frequency with which we gather that data, but it's not necessarily a program, program that will go away because of its importance in supporting other initiatives within our department. There are also some programs that are in their infancy, and we really haven't been able to gauge their effectiveness. So digital badging is an example of one of those that was implemented last year, a little bit further along in the year. We think it's an important component of professional learning for our employees and career pathing and career planning. And so we'll, of course, continue to monitor the results and the impact of that program, and, and it will be reflected in the next priority-based budgeting cycle. But again, how we deliver that service will be impacted by some of the changes that we're recommending. And then there's other programs that is a part of continuous improvement, we are, we would look to make a reduction anyway. So for example, there are certification partnerships that we've entered into with TMCC that were an effort around recruiting and, and training more substitute teachers and parent professionals. And the idea was work with TMCC, community education, to offer a course to people who might be interested in exploring that as a career pathway, provide them some training, and then, of course, recruit from that population. We had a very low response rate to those, to those courses. In fact, we had no enrollment in either one, so we're not going to continue to devote any resources to that. The recommendations or the options that are up for consideration in our area, one of the three is a change that we already made. So when I assumed this position in July of last year, I looked to make a restructure of our human resources leadership team, again, with the goal of aligning resources, making sure that like work was with like administrators. And so I did not backfill the position that I vacated, which was the Director of Talent Acquisition position, and you'll see the savings from that reflected here. The other options that are being considered are, the first is restructuring two secretary positions that we have within the department into one administrative assistant position. One of our current secretaries is looking to retire, and so with that change, we would take those two positions, consolidate into one, and increase the level of work responsibility to the admin assistant level. And then within risk management, we started a pilot again, as I made the transition into the Chief Human Resources Officer role, to move from having program service technicians that handles sort of the day-to-day tasks of risk management into having risk specialist positions, which are a little bit higher level, a little bit broader scope, scope of authority or span of control or focus. And that model has worked really well for us. So we currently have two risk specialists. We'd like to take the remaining three program service tech positions and consolidate those into two risk, two additional risk specialist positions so that we can fund the .5 FTE fiscal analyst that's being removed from the business office. fiscal analyst that's being removed from the business office budget. So that ends up being mostly a cost-neutral reorg with some savings that we were able to contribute towards our overall PBB goal. Like I said at the beginning, you know, in terms of cutting a program and seeing the dollar impact of that, because there's a lot of crossover of positions, you know, the relationship between the changes that we're making and the impact to the programs listed, we talked a little bit about. I think, you know, what we can expect to see overall in terms of service-level impacts are things like, you know, the frequency of exit and transfer, exit transfer survey data gathering that I mentioned before. Less professional development opportunities for our staff. So there's, of course, resources that go into providing those training opportunities for our human resources staff in terms of the scope of continuous improvement projects that we can do, right? Less staff means less resources to devote to continually monitoring and analyzing the work and the way we do it with the goal of being more efficient, of course. We will have fewer resources available to support our employee recognition program, and so we'll have to work at a district level to determine what that program looks like moving forward. And then we, we think that we might see some increased turnaround time on verifications of employment, because we get a lot of them, and those two secretary positions currently today help support that work. So we'll, again, look to turn those around as quickly as possible, but we think there might be an impact. And then finally, you know, there's a good and a bad side to this, but we'll need to continue to explore ways to leverage our vendor partners. So it's good in the way that we can increase efficiencies. The downside can sometimes be less control over the level of customer service or information being provided, right? So when I think about risk management and leveraging our vendor partners to help answer some of the day-to-day claims questions that we get, for example, good for, good for increasing efficiencies, maybe not so good because we have less control and the message that the members receive or the level of service that they receive is somewhat outside of our, our direct control. So, any questions?
Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Emily, for that. Just a question, so in not filling the talent acquisition and eliminating that position, how will we acquire talent?
So we do have, we do still have a talent acquisition team, and Dr. Mike Paul, who was formerly the Director of Professional Growth Systems, took on some of that responsibility. We reclassified his position. He's now the Executive Director of Human Resources, but he oversees talent acquisition and professional growth, both of those functions within the department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, so has that, since you've already made the change and redistributed the responsibilities, has the, has the dollar savings from that been computed into the deficit, do you know, David?
It'll be included with all of this information, so it has not as of yet.
Okay, but that's good.
Yeah, so it's actually a fairly easy reduction.
All right, all right. Okay, great. And Emily, I just want to congratulate you on, on always wanting to look for, you know, for ways we can save and restructure and continuously improve. I know you all do a great job for, for the district, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Office of Student Support Services Team, that we spent a little bit of time with last week, thank you for having us.
Good afternoon. Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer. I'm here with my colleagues Victor Sherbandi and David Freeman, Executive Directors, and Rollin Stallworth, who is our Athletic Coordinator.
Okay, and David, I saw you last night at the Basketball League at City of Sparks, so, and I saw Victor too, yeah.
Were they playing President Hall?
No, nor was I.
Coaching.
Me and Trustee Minetto were never picked for basketball. I'll just stipulate to that. Okay.
So the quartile four program we want to talk about today is family-school partnerships. I do want to give the trustees a little context. Family-school partnerships has been reduced in budgets over the last several years, just even part of our budget reduction. So for example, even last year, I believe that they were reduced $40,000, which has directly impacted their ability to support schools and families. If this was to be decided by the trustees, this would actually be a position. So this department, they, it sounds like it's a very, you know, just a nice department, family-school partnerships, but they actually do a lot of things that are required by law, everything from Nevada Kids Read in regards to family participation, to, to parent university. And by the way, the last year, the $40,000, that was a direct reduction of parent university classes, which we know provides families an opportunity to be able to engage and learn and how they can be better support their students to their learning. If this was cut, this would directly impact many of the programs that they do, whether it's from supporting school teams and how they look at to make sure families are supported, to the family graduation advocates, to the APTT, which is the Academic Parent Teacher Teams, which allows families to learn even how to understand and read that data. So this would be a position.
And this is over and above whatever schools use from Title I to provide that support in their school?
Yes. Each school, for Title I, each school is required, and I forget the percent, I think it's 1%, but Debbie can correct me, 5%, thank you. They're required to use 5% of all title monies to engage families, you know, that's under federal law. In addition, obviously, as a part of the board, they have, you've identified strategic measures in regards to the importance of families. That's under Strategic Goal Number Three, and that's the increased satisfaction of parent university courses, et cetera. So there's, it really is a big initiative for our district is family engagement.
Are there other grant resources that are possibilities for this?
We have, I know we've been working with our Grants Department, just even through our state categorical grants, whether it's through Zoom, whether it's through Nevada Kids Read or Read By Three. We have asked for that because it is a big requirement of those state and federal monies, but unfortunately, we've not received any of those monies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The next one is a very easy one. It's Extended Studies Online. Since the trustees, I believe at the last board meeting, you approved of the new program, Edgenuity, for our online credit accrual and recovery system. Extended Studies, for those of you who are unfamiliar, they provide, kind of like the title, they provide different opportunities for students to gain, gain credit, whether it's either in addition to their caseload or to recover credit. And we think this could definitely be eliminated in regards to those redundancies that I think Mark spoke about at the beginning. David Freeman will speak next regarding special education professional development.
Good afternoon. David Freeman, Executive Director, for the record. This one is not as, as an easier one. With special education, the majority of what we do is mandated or will directly lead to due process. So the area that fell in Quartile III was professional learning. What part of it was to cut $100,000 from our professional learning budget. Some of this was bringing in specialists and experts for autism or intellectual disabilities. We feel part of that we could probably embed in what we do and with our talent that we have within our ranks. The other part will be for the professional learning, our subs for teachers when we have to sub them out. Schools will have to take on a little bit more of that responsibility as we move forward, depending on, you know, what professional learning we're providing. Also in there is-
If I may?
Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, David, to cut you off. So you're saying in eliminating subs, what you do currently is if there is a special ed teacher that's out, then you provide a special ed certified substitute for that?
For the professional learning. So if we're holding a professional learning right now, LEA training, if any of them need a sub, our department provides that sub, so, or at least the funding for that sub.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
The, the second part of our elimination is a 1.0 FTE, reducing our professional learning specialist. Currently, this person, this position works under the Director of Professional Learning, so with Dr. Byersdorf. The, this person's responsible for all of special ed professional learning. So they're the ones who coordinated, who brings in the content, works with all of our ARL and our options teachers, provides the content there. So it's a full-time position to lose. If we had to do that, then we would look within, and one of our instructional coordinators or implementation specialists would do it, but then that's, you know, we're losing direct support to schools and students when it comes to that, so.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thank you, David.
The next program, and we have Victor and Rollins here to speak to the specific, is a very challenging one. It's very intricate, and we've had lots of conversations about this. The majority of the Quartile III programs in Student Services that were identified through this priority-based budgeting was student athletics and activities. Obviously, I can speak on behalf of Student Services. We can't even clearly articulate the possible impact this may have to our students, our schools, and our community if student athletics and activities were either reduced or eliminated. So we, I know we had to identify a possible impact for that. I don't even know if we could feasibly be able to do one that would clearly identify that impact, just even keeping students engaged in school. Part of, part of this conversation is the budget items, is the way it's budgeted is you actually look at coaches, you may look at officials who officiate, you may look at district travel. There's many ways we can look at this. So for example, we started, when we looked at this, was maybe eliminate it out of district travel, maybe even reducing the number of games, maybe even reducing our participation in NIAA, because all, none of these are required. What we ended up doing, or at least we, we hope we did this well for the trustees, was maybe identify some different ways, and then maybe we can receive some, either suggestions or recommendations of which way to go. So the three options we just started with, so that way Rollins wasn't working in identifying, let's say, 32 different options, was elimination of middle school sports, which I'll talk about in a moment, the elimination of high school freshman sports or grade band, or even elimination of a single sport across the district, to kind of give you an idea of the cost or the impact of what that would look like. Obviously, there are greater considerations here, just with various federal laws of Title IX in regards to boys and girls sports, so we have to be very careful. If we do eliminate a, a, a boys athletic sport, we would then want to look at a girls, and we can definitely speak to that. The first option, the elimination of middle school sports, that is not for sixth grade. We know the district has been talking about increasing engagement of students by maybe even expanding intramurals to sixth-grade students, but what this proposal would do is this would eliminate all middle school sports, but then expand and replace that with intramural programs. And the difference really is the traveling and games between each other. Right now, our intramurals are not really strong in the middle school, but we wanted to come to the trustees, not just with that elimination of those sports, but also maybe the increase of intramurals, so maybe it would be somewhat of a balance in that regard. And I know Rollins can speak specifically, if y'all have any questions, in regards to the middle school sports or the intramurals for the middle school.
How would you deliver intramurals? I mean, how, how would this save money?
Rollin Stallworth, thank you, Board. It would be somewhat of a challenge, because right now, the intramural programs would have to take place after school, and to open up those doors with regards to transportation and getting those kids back home after that, it would be a tough sale. The other issue that we have now is there are some intramural programs that are kind of taking place with a supervision aspect at lunchtime during the middle school day, and they're, they're opening up the gyms and, and supervision is being provided with the basketball being thrown out, not really organized, but just activities for them for those last 15 minutes of lunch. So we would definitely have to explore the, the whole concept of how the intramural program would work with a, with an athletic element to it in an after-school program just within the school itself.
Okay. And, and as you all have said, we're working on expanding the activities for the well-rounded student, and, and this is certainly going in the other direction. Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. So one of, Victor, you mentioned that the intramural program isn't really robust, hadn't really, or maybe Byron, you mentioned that. Can you, can you talk a little bit about why that is?
The question again?
Just why it hasn't really taken off in, in the intramurals? No, intermurals?
Intramurals, yes.
Intermurals, yeah. Why that hasn't really gotten, it's because of some of those challenges, transportation and after-school and-
Yeah, and there really isn't a, a specific budget that the middle schools have ever had really for that. There's a couple of slots that principals have access to, to provide some teachers with some extra duty pay, but, but, yeah. And the example of soccer that we're currently doing right now with the district is kind of working on that, but it's really not intramurals, because they are using those funds to travel and go to the schools.
They play each other.
So they're playing each other.
They play each other.
So, so the aspect here is there hasn't been any specific funds directed specifically for the implementation of an intramural program.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Trustee Cotto?
So intramurals would put most of the costs on families if they want to participate. Is that like the difference versus district-sponsored sports in middle schools is district money, right?
Well, the, the major difference would be in their participation would be that in the athletic portion of the middle schools right now, we provide them transportation to and from those games and back to the schools after the games. The parents would still probably have to come and pick them up following the games. The, the finances as far as the intramural programs would be is, is that those funds would be directed solely within the school, and then the parents' participation with that would be still to come pick them up and, and get them from that program and take them home following it.
So the cost savings is taking into account replacing middle school sports with intramurals?
Exactly. So I think the cost was for, for almost $500,000, which is the cost now to run the middle school athletic program. If you're going to run somewhat of a successful middle school program, you'd probably have to come up with somewhere between $10,000 to $20,000 per middle school to implement that, multiply that times the number of middle schools, and that would be the, the cost of implementing that and cover those costs.
Thanks.
I hope that helps.
Victor Sherbandi, Executive Director, Office of Student Services, for the record. I would also add that, obviously, if we did away with middle school athletics and moved more in the direction of intramurals, that would take away quite a few, I think, opportunities for kids, as well as it would really, I think, bring up a lot of equity concerns, because not all students would be able to participate in those intramural programs.
Yep, that's a tough one. Okay, thank you.
And the last option that we're bringing forward, and obviously, I asked Rollins to identify just two sample sports. We're not trying to, you know, identify or pick on a, that I did individual one. We'd have to look, obviously, because there's really no great selection here, but we wanted to identify the anticipated cost savings if we were to identify one or two specific sports at the high school level. And you, just to remind the trustees, that would include everything from transportation, coaches, the officials, et cetera, et cetera, the multiple things that we pay for, the concussion testing, it's, it's, it's pretty in-depth. But we're looking approximately anywhere from $300 to half a million dollars per district-wide athletic sport if the trustees wanted to look at that.
Okay. Yes, trustee Cotto?
I got a question about option two. So if we eliminate freshman sports, what kind of impact are we going to see throughout the district? Is, are there freshmen already competing in JV, or we think if freshman sports eliminated, most freshmen aren't actually going to participate at all?
We have about six sports right now that are freshman-specific sports that we have, so those sports would be eliminated. We also have six sports that we offer that freshmen can participate and go out for the JV or varsity teams and those, and most of those are individualized sports, golf, tennis, skiing, those types of sports. So it would impact six sports where freshmen compete against freshmen only, and it would, what it would do is provide or not provide those kids with an opportunity to play that sport at the JV or varsity level, or just really limit the amount of those that would play those, those other sports.
So it wouldn't be one of those situations where you eliminate freshman sports and the JV team would just get a little bit bigger, or we thinking that's going to basically offset the savings?
For the record, Victor Sherbandi, I would say that if you allowed, or if you eliminated freshman athletics, and some of those freshmen that were superior in a variety of ways, they might make a JV or varsity roster, but that's decreasing the number of opportunities that those JV and varsity-level athletes would be able to, because you can't, you can't put more and more athletes on a roster, so.
Okay, thank you. And of course, many of those freshmen would, oh, bless you.
Bless you.
Wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be competitive enough to be on a JV team, so that means they- Wouldn't necessarily be competitive enough to be on a JV team, so that means they don't get to play at all, so, yeah, okay.
I would also like to add that one of the issues that would come up with this would be the fact that what we found out is, is that our freshman kids that don't participate, or that we can't keep them out or get them out, if they get involved in community or club sports or other programs, we have a tough time getting them back in. And we want to make sure that we get our hands on them and have them for all four years of high school, so we don't want to make, we want to make sure that we're able to use that magnet and keep them in once we get them there.
And we know that freshman year is tough for a lot of kids, that transition, and having that organized activity for those young people can keep some of them in school. Exactly.
And also, just to add to Rollins, the whole club sports, which I know we discussed in depth this last year, is, and to Victor's point, it does create a significant equity in regards to just students who can access, because it is very expensive for families and for students to be able to participate in club sports, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Trustees, I'm a little concerned, it's 12:35, we're on page seven of seventeen. And we're going to have to be thinking about, I don't want everybody to just rush through, but we may have to have a subsequent session to complete these, because this is our chance to ask these questions, so Vice President Raymond?
I just wondered, it seems like our general board meeting is fairly light. Is there a way to continue this?
We absolutely can, we absolutely can keep going. Yeah, so.
So, we only have two more, looks like, departments, so it might go a little faster. Three more, it might go a little faster than...
Just wanted to throw the options out there, but we'll keep going, and we'll be here, yep. Okay, Ms. Payne?
Thank you, good afternoon, President Simon Holland, trustee Superintendent Davis. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, and I will make this as quick as I possibly can. So, having a look at each of the areas that are identified in my office. Firstly, let's just touch on the brand development and the marketing. So, one is in Quartile Four and one is in Quartile Three. This is actually one role, and the role is very much a marketing role, specifically focusing on marketing our option schools, very specifically North Star. The person in this role resigned a few weeks back, about a month ago, and at that time, because of the budget situation, I decided that we would leave the role vacant for the time being. So, it does mean we will not be undertaking any marketing for North Star, but I think we can live with that for a few years. So, the brand development and the marketing roles have already been taken care of.
Okay.
So, then, just going to the Welcome Center, and I'm taking these a little bit out of order. The Welcome Center is an area that you all know. So, when we talk about eliminating the Welcome Center, there may well be options, other options available to us, such as potentially putting a kiosk in the little room on the outside, and people maybe phone who they're meeting with. In terms of the Washoe County School District mainline, we could have that purely automated, so that there isn't an option to actually speak to a living human being. We could remove the inner lock, the security on the door here, so that it's just open access to visitors to come and go and meet with whoever they wish to meet with. Of course, all of those options result in most certainly a decrease in customer service. And in terms of security, I would leave that up to school police to say, but from my perspective, it looks like we would be compromising security of this building. So, that's the Welcome Center. So, let's take a look at graphic design, and this may be an area that possibly you're less familiar with, and I just want to spend a few moments on this. If we had to outsource the volume of projects that we currently undertake, from my experience, and my experience of this community, I believe that we would spend more than what we currently spend on the salary and the benefits associated. An example of that would be a flyer, so, and it depends on the complexity of both the content or the design. Could anywhere, could be in the region of anywhere between $500,000 to $1,000 per item. And to put that into context, we did 171 projects purely related to graphic design over the last twelve months. And that is everything from working with our family and school partnerships on the Family Summit, Family Access Day, the Multicultural Day Program. We work with HR on recruitment flyers, adverts, PowerPoint, the employee recognition flyer. We worked with Dr. Lamaca on the Ombudsman brochure, Safe and Healthy Schools flyer, Spared Conference Joy Prom logo. We did the new school mascots and the colors for the new schools, the gate logo, the emergency management logo, designs for T-shirts, and then there is the work that we do for Capital. And that's everything from groundbreaking invitations, ribbon-cutting invitations, mailers, information, night flyers, website graphics, report covers, direct mail pieces. I mean, the list pretty much is substantial. And it goes without saying that everything that comes out of my team is translated into Spanish, so that often means the design just needs some tweaking. And I think it's just important for me to say, as a marketing communications professional, that design is not about making things look pretty. It's actually about comprehension. And what effective design does, it pulls the reader through that piece of material, whether it's a flyer or something complex like the strategic plan. It pulls you from the beginning to the end, and that's something that Clipart, for example, could not do, would not do. My recommendation is that we consider, or you consider, using, taking 20% of this salary and allocating it to the capital fund, simply because of the amount of work that this person does for Capital, and it's fairly substantial, but I do believe that would warrant further conversation. If you do decide to delete or to eliminate this position, then individual departments and schools would either have a choice to outsource their projects, and that means find a local marketing agency and, you know, give them the brief and do all the editing and the approval themselves. Use Clipart, Clipart is always available, or not to do the project. As a result, the Washoe County School District would, in my belief, most certainly lose consistency in design and in our messaging. And that, in turn, would impact our students, our families, and our community. And I believe that our families and our community actually need the best in terms of how we communicate with them. They actually deserve more, not less. So, moving on to videography, and I think this is possibly more self-explanatory, but still, let me just touch on that. From my experience of the local market, if we outsourced, say, some of the longer, more complex videos, and think the allocations video you saw a few weeks ago, think the Wild Creek video, we're probably looking at a cost in the region of $10,000, and that's everything from initial storyboarding through to editing and final approval. Shorter ones probably in the region of about $5,000. Context again, we did 167 videos over the last twelve months, varying in length, some of them short, some of them long. That included 27 Facebook Live that we posted on Facebook and generated huge amount of hits and reposting. And then we did 27 videos where we actually covered events where the school district were out in the community, so that's events and forums. Once again, it's my belief, if we stopped using video to generate excitement, to increase knowledge by explaining very complex topics, and actually reporting back to the community how their tax dollars are being spent, and that's incumbent on us, to be accountable and transparent to the community, then our effectiveness and our community support, I believe, would be negatively impacted. As with the graphics position, my recommendation would be to transfer 20% of the cost to the capital fund, simply because, once again, the amount of work this role does for Capital. And we would also have to revisit the strategic plan, as one of our metrics is the number of views we generate on video. And then just to kind of wrap it up, just to follow up on trustee Raymond's initial comment or question earlier about layoffs, these two positions would result in layoffs if you decided to eliminate them. I'm very happy to take any questions or clarify anything that was unclear.
Dr. Taylor, did you have a comment or question?
How could you tell?
Because you had your light on earlier.
Oh, I didn't know it, thank you, I do. Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Irene.
You're welcome.
I know your recommendation is to allocate 20% of the graphic and communication specialists?
Yes.
Right, to, or Capital, because that's where that work is.
And the videography position, both.
I was just going to go, and then the second one is the videography position?
Yes.
And then the position that's vacant is, that's the virtual blended?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was originally, that position came about a few years back, when we were looking, as a school, we were looking at our online offering, which was, it was called Wolf Online School. And it really wasn't generating the students or getting the graduation rate that an online school we wanted to aim for. So, we got involved and we rebranded that school, and so that's how that position came about. And then we had a campaign to actually let folks know about it, that it's an option for students. I do believe that the school is currently at capacity. So, that's why I think it's okay for this position to stay in abeyance for some time, and then we revisit it when our budget situation has changed and improved.
And so, that's the virtual, thank you for that. That's the virtual blended specialist.
And the brand development, because it's one position, and it's split between Quartile Four and Quartile Three.
Oh, I see, okay.
But you're right, it is the virtual.
It's the marketing, that's where I got a little off, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And Irene, how does Capital feel about the 20% transfer?
Well, I had a conversation, obviously I would do, with Mr. Etchar before mentioning it to you. And that's why I say I think it warrants further conversation. I did it really just by looking at the two roles and the percentage spent on Capital. But it's an offering, and I do think I wouldn't, I would want to talk more to Mr. Etchar, for sure.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Payne? Okay, thank you, and thanks for all the great work your team does, we appreciate it. Mr. Etchar? You've got a lot.
Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer. Indeed, we do, and it's a pretty daunting list when you look at this, but I can tell you that we're going to try to roll a lot of these up, and we're going to try to go pretty quickly with these. So, I am going to take a couple of minutes, though, because I do believe it's important to provide some context when we talk about facility management, because when you total this up, it's 9.18 million, so it's a little over half of the total of all the current budget reduction options. So, I think we need to put some context to it. So, I'll be giving an overview on the housekeeping and custodial programs, and Tammy Zimmerman, our Deputy Chief Facility Management Officer, will be talking about the maintenance grounds and regulatory items, and we're also joined by Charlie Hoppy, our Director of Maintenance and Housekeeping, to answer any questions you may have. So, just for some context really quickly, before the passage of WC1, when we obviously did not have the funding to deal with the things behind the walls, or roofs, or playgrounds, or anything else, we had one non-negotiable at that time, and that was we were going to keep our schools clean. Whether we could repair all the systems or not, we were going to keep them clean. And we realized that because we have so many older schools in this district, that was an imperative to us. But even with our new schools, I mean, we obviously have to keep them clean. It's like having a new car, it's not going to look like a new car very long if you don't properly clean it. So, the housekeeping custodial portion of the facilities and management group consists of a total of 338 employees, including 218 custodians and 95 site facility coordinators that maintain the 112 schools and auxiliary sites that we have. Custodians are allocated to sites based on the size of the school, and we have many employees that actually split time between different sites and more than one school. So, in that regard, oh, thanks, I'll let you click. In that regard, there are national comparisons for square footage being maintained by school custodial staff. The Council of Great City Schools median is 24,822 square feet per custodian, and we are currently at 28,800 square feet. So, that's about a 16%, we're over the national median for maintaining our schools. However, I think we all recognize that those numbers really do not portray, what they don't portray is that our school custodians and site facility coordinators are key members of the school and provide services well outside of a defined custodial cleaning matrix. From just simply getting to know the students, all the way to assisting in a school's positive behavioral intervention and support program, custodians and site facility coordinators work with the school's administrative staff in a multitude of areas. One area that is often overlooked is that they really become the experts on their individual school facilities. They are the go-to people when people like contractors, or the fire marshal, or emergency responders come to that school. And then, of course, there's the area of concern that we've heard numerous times during the community budget forums, namely, the concern of what a reduction of custodial would have on viral outbreaks, both on preventative side and also in disinfecting our schools that are placed on outbreak status by the Health Department. We currently have, at this time, eight schools on outbreak status.
Wow.
For influenza-type illness. Our total this school year is 17 schools that have been placed on outbreak status by the Health Department for influenza-type illness, along with norovirus, gastrointestinal illness. And this is not unique, I mean, we've had worse years than this year, I can guarantee, but it's constant every year, we always face this. So, just as importantly as being on the outbreak status and disinfecting our schools is keeping them clean. Obviously, we follow a cleaning protocol to do our best to try to be preventative and minimize those outbreaks occurring in our schools. This includes the daily disinfection of the high-touch areas, such as desktops, sinks, door handles, pencil sharpeners, et cetera. That being said, when you look at this list of cuts, the first site support reduction item for 4.33 million would equate to the elimination of 69 employees in custodial services. That would mean a reduction of 32% of our custodial staff. This would equate to approximately a 43% cleaning area increase per custodian. To put that in context, if that were to happen, staff would typically only have time to empty the trashcans and disinfect the restrooms on a daily basis. Hallways would be vacuumed once per week, and classroom cleaning would be eliminated, including the disinfection of the high-touch areas. So, I want to stress, and why I say I'm going to roll some of these up, priority-based budgeting is new to all of us, and in hindsight, I think we broke out too many programs in custodial services. We most likely need to roll a lot of those up in the future as you start seeing these. So, I'm not going to go through every single item on this list unless you have a question on these Quartile Four programs. But as we continue and take a look at these, other Quartile Four programs, such as staff training, inspections, communications, equipment maintenance, snow removal, the Quartile Four employee reduction total equates to 123 employees. If we include in the Quartile Three reductions, we're up to 148 employees. To have a functional department, we obviously need to do a lot of these items. We have to train our employees, we have to communicate with them, we have to maintain our equipment and make pathways and stairs safe when it snows, and obviously, we've been seeing a lot of that this year. So, the bottom line is, any reductions in these areas would really equate to an increase in area to be cleaned by each custodian and a reduction of the cleaning standards. So, as again, we're already 16% over the national median, so if we reduce any of these areas, say communications or snow, it really comes down to we have less staff to maintain our schools, and we have to change the cleaning matrix of what we do for our schools. So, I'll close my comments and really... So I'll close my comments, and really, on the quartile four, I'll go through a couple of them, but like I said, I'm kind of rolling these together. We received, we have a great group in custodial services. We are really blessed with a group of dedicated employees. And HR recently helped us gather some information regarding our custodians that I found really interesting. So again, we currently have 218 custodians, but Washoe County School District has 449 employees that were originally hired as custodians. Many move on to other positions within the district. So of those 449 employees that are still in the district that started as custodians, 268 of them have been here longer than five years, 192 have been here longer than 10 years, 45 have been here longer than 20 years, and four have been here longer than 30 years. So to me, that's just kind of the definition of dedication to this district, and how a lot of employees start as custodians, like I said, and continue their career through Washoe County School District. So again, I'm not going to go through all these, but there's a couple that are kind of unique, that are not directly with custodians. The capital project support departmental moves, that's basically when projects happen in the schools and you see the custodial staff actually help move furniture out, move furniture in, move the teachers' supplies in and out, just to deal with a project. That project could be capital-related, it could be a school-funded project. So that's what that second item for $153,000 is. And the other one I'll mention is the gym floor refinishing. That's a very specialized work. Reduction would, obviously, if we got rid of this, would become a safety issue for our gym floors, and ultimately, the gym floor could be deemed as unusable. And we've had those issues in the past before we actually, well, I should say, there's more on the ground side, but we've had that issue in the past, where we need to make sure we keep our fields and our gym floors to a certain standard, or they're deemed by the athletics group as unusable. So really, again, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but if you have any specific questions on the quartile four cuts, I'd be glad to address them. But again, everything kind of rolls back into the number of custodians we have and the square footage of space we have to maintain.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Pete, thank you so much. You're right, the maintenance team, they do an incredible job, they really do. My question is about the snow removal, 11 FTE. What do they do outside of the wintertime? Are they assigned in other areas?
Yeah.
How do we get to the 11 FTE? Can I know in the summertime without removing the snow?
You know, when you look at a lot of these items, whether it's just like communications to our employees, and you take, you know, 400 employees, and you take a half an hour a week they use to read their emails and all that, it adds up to like eight employees, because you have so many employees. Same thing with snow. It's not like 11 individuals who just remove snow, it's a portion of 400 employees removing snow. So, yeah.
Vice President Raymond.
On the spreadsheet, it's listed as a four, but maybe it's not that. Arctic alerts communications, is that, is that on this screen, or are we getting to that later?
It's actually on quartile four. It's on, so for a number of 130,433, and that's the emails that go out to the schools saying we are on arctic alert. And actually, Charlie, if you want to kind of address what that actually means.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Pete. For the record, this is Charlie Hoppy, Housekeeping and Maintenance Director. I really want to constitute this also the time that the staff, custodians and SFC spend preparing for it, too. So they actually, it takes potentially up to a couple of hours to make sure that their school is ready, to open the doors, run the sinks, so they don't freeze. So it's a combination of the communications that get sent out to them, they have a checklist that ensures that they've gone through all the requirements we've provided, that's important to make sure the school's ready to open for the next day. So that's, it's actually, when it does trigger, actually, we triggered one a week ago, and so it took a little extra time. So that's, and all, once again, you take 2% of everybody, it adds up.
Okay. It's not necessarily a service we subscribe to or anything, it's just their time of the custodial staff to make sure that we don't have burst pipes and...
Correct.
Okay.
Again, Pete Etchar, you see this a lot, especially it seems like during breaks. I mean, I remember Pine Middle School, when the pipe broke, and it was kind of like at a holiday. I mean, we're, Charlie sends this notification out, and those custodians go to their school to make sure it's ready for cold winter weather when there's no staff available and not there.
I had a question about the floods, fires mitigation. Is that something that insurance can be tapped to fund for us? I'm sure you've tried, just want to ask the question on the record.
Sure. Yeah, it's one of those, it's a combination, a lot of the time, instead of trying to vendor out everything, because some of the stuff is small, and sometimes it grows in nature. But usually, I've noticed, our staff is quicker to respond, to get things set up, to minimize the overall damage, for instance, water damage, roof leak, what have you. We have staff on board that reports it, we respond, clean it up, set up the fans. And then if it gets too big of a job for us, meaning two or three staff can't manage it, then that's when we'll call out somebody. But that, maybe that happens once or twice a year, we need to call a vendor out.
I'm just wondering, though, if insurance would reimburse us for our costs. I would think it's easier to get a reimbursement if we have to hire somebody to do it.
Correct.
When we do it internally, I'm just wondering if we can get reimbursements, because it's certainly in their best interest for us to be responding.
We can definitely take a look at that item and see if there's anything that we're doing on an internal basis that may qualify for insurance reimbursement. We can definitely look into that.
Okay. Okay. Any others on this quartile four list? Okay. And of course, again, we heard loud and clear, both from staff as well as parents, that we appreciate the great work in housekeeping and maintenance that our staff does for the district, and people did not want to see a lower standard of service for those areas.
So we'll jump into the quartile three, which are a little bit more specific. So again, Tammy's going to kind of walk you through a lot of these.
Tammy Zimmerman, Deputy Chief Facilities Management Officer. So going through our quartile threes, you'll see intrusion and security, and that is for our equipment repair, to maintain our alarm systems at our schools. We have some assets in our schools that we'd like to keep, and we'd like to keep our staff and students safe, and keep people out so that we don't have vandalism. We do alarm a lot of our computer labs, and those seem to be a lot of the things that disappear. So those are a risk factor that the Board would have to take into account, not having those services of alarms with our equipment repair. And it also takes into account the materials that we procure to fix those systems. As it looks on the page, it's about a quarter FTE, and it's hard to take a quarter FTE out of somebody's position, as we've heard previously. So the next one that we'll talk about are the time clocks and bell schedules. This is for equipment repair to go in and check those bell schedules. You know, we're going to come up on a new balance calendar, and we're going to have to reset those at the schools, because we don't want them going off all the time, so our new calendar makes that happen. We also have schools that change because of programming, transportation, nutrition, services, so they change those just about yearly. So it takes a tech to go out to those, to change that for the schools. And we don't want to disrupt that time in the classroom, because bells going off and not knowing where you're supposed to be can be disruptive to the school environment.
The next three are actually, again, custodial, and so I'm not going to go through those specifically, except to say, I think sometimes, like I said, with priority-based budgeting, we have probably too many programs. These are great information for us to have as a department, to run our department, but as far as rolling them out to you, it's probably a little too granular. I mean, the next one is, you know, our cleaning consumable supplies, you know, the next one is, you know, substitutes, and it's just part of our doing business. So again, it all comes back to how many custodians we have, and how many square feet we have to maintain.
The next one we'll go into is annex supply, and this is basically a store for our schools to procure from. We procure in large quantities, so we get the best price possible. We have belts, gaskets, so it allows an efficiency for our site custodians to not go out and procure those materials. They're delivered in-school mail by our warehouse drivers to the schools, so it allows them to be efficient in actually fixing their school items. So that, and it is a half FTE, but again, it's hard to take that half FTE out. But it provides an efficiency that I don't think we would see if we had our custodians going to Home Depot and Lowe's, as well as it makes sure that we maintain certain chemicals in our buildings that are safety issues. We want them to only purchase certain things, because they're trained in using those chemicals. The next one we have is work orders. That one comes from maintenance techs following up on work orders, and inputting information into the systems, as well as custodians at the site. If we don't have custodians putting work orders in, then we don't have a process that's efficient enough to get out to the sites what we need to get out to them. So that's not just maintenance techs and following up, that also is the SFC's lead custodians, utility crew for carpet repairs. It's a combination of housekeeping and maintenance workers to get the schools to have their items fixed in a timely manner. Facilities use, that's one that we are working through the fee schedule to determine that, because that's for outside people to use our facilities, and we currently have a fee schedule, but we are looking to update that to be more in line with the industry standard. So we can definitely look to that, to implement some of that cost savings. The next ones are the fast start, that are covered more in the housekeeping area. We can go to the irrigation shutdown. We currently have one irrigation tech for the entire district. They procure all of the heads, drippers for the entire district, as well as make sure that the elementary schools are maintained, because they don't have a groundskeeper. They have a head SFC, and they help with that, but this one helps maintain and order all the parts for the entire district. So having that FTE gone, and it is listed as 0.4 FTE that this would happen, is very difficult. We wouldn't have those efficiencies, we would have pipes that are broken, and water that is not used and we're wasting, but we pay for that water. So we would find inefficiencies not having that tech position.
Vice President Raymond?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you want to finish? Okay. My question with the irrigation was just, so for those elementary schools that we, and middle schools that we partner with the cities for use, we still maintain the irrigation? Or does the city in those cases?
We still maintain those areas.
Okay.
As you've seen with budget cuts through the county and the cities, they're maintaining less of those. We're taking on a lot of that burden to maintain them for our students and staffs.
So they're, they're not paying us a use fee either? They're just mowing the lawn?
They mow them, for the most part, for us.
And do they do fertilization?
I believe they do fertilization with that, but most of the drip heads and the irrigation heads are ours to maintain.
Okay. Okay.
So the next item, again, is kind of that same issue. This is just the time the site facility coordinators put against when they're removing snow.
Did we, we went past the groundskeeping. Did I, did I miss that discussion?
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the, we'll go back to groundskeeping.
Okay. It was up before work orders and after annex supply?
And annexation. So groundskeeping, sorry, these are specifically at our middle school and high school. We tend to think the custodians do some of the snow removal, but our groundskeepers at those schools do a lot of the parking lot areas, as well as satellite areas. But they have our athletic fields to keep up and maintain, because we have safety issues with them being deemed non-playable. As well as, we have infrastructure that we don't think about on our sites, that we have to maintain, storm drains, they clean those out, we have ditches, and when we have events, we have to maintain those, or we have property loss. And we'd like to maintain those in a way that keeps us from having property loss.
Okay. Pete, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
The only thing, I was just thinking when she said that, is, I mean, in the six years I've been in the district, probably the most feedback I've gotten from the public was the year that Reed High School's field was deemed unplayable for the state playoff game. So, I mean, that's where we have to, you know, face these issues and make sure our schools are playable.
Yeah. Okay.
The other items that our groundskeepers take care of at our middle schools and high schools is the landscaping. When we get a C of O, we have a certain requirement of landscaping, and that continues throughout the life of that facility. So we can't just not replant a tree, or have a certain percentage of vegetation on the grounds, we have to maintain that. And that's something we don't necessarily think about, but it has to stay.
And this was an area, we did get a lot of input from folks. Is there any way we can have students, you know, high school students, folks at ACT that are working in, you know, landscaping or natural resources, is there any way that we could incorporate them in helping us with this? And I know sometimes it's a lot of work to have an intern or a student working with you, but I know this was something that we heard about, so just, you know, any thoughts you have now or later through the process? Any comments?
We'd have to go through trading with them, we'd have to talk to risk management about that, because when you're doing landscaping and maintenance, you're using equipment that needs that training and has the potential for hazards. So we'd have to work through that with risk management, as well as training and implementing somebody to produce that training for students, and come up with a program for them, so...
I know, you know, not to go too far off the subject, but Juvenile Probation does a lot of work with their kids, helping them to do, you know, constructive, positive things. And they do operate equipment, and they do, you know, so it might be something we could learn from, so...
We can definitely look into that, if that's what the Board chooses to...
Just a thought. Thank you.
Our next one that we, that we'll get down to is the photovoltaic maintenance and monitoring. This program, we were lucky enough to put a whole bunch of PVs up at some of our sites, and our general fund realizes a $700,000 savings from energy for photovoltaic systems. And this halftime FTE and $142,000 is the vendor repair and material procurement for fixing our PV system, so that we can realize that savings. The next one that we'll look at is TeamWorks and DDC Allerton Control System. TeamWorks is our work order system that the custodians put in, and our maintenance techs go out and repair those items with. This is the actual upkeep and purchase of that work order system. It does take us about a 0.12 FTE to maintain that system, so that we can efficiently answer questions back to the site, and get their items repaired in a timely manner. The other portion to that is our DDC Allerton Systems. And that's a system that is communicating to our thermostats and our HVAC systems at the site. We have to program that for occupied and unoccupied times, so that we can realize that savings and not having those systems on all the time. As well as, in the mornings and the afternoons, our maintenance techs review that data to make sure that they're working properly, and that we don't have systems that aren't on, and that we can create that environment in the classroom. So we would lose that efficiency of knowing, did they turn on? Are they up to temperature? If we had to cut that program out.
So the way that that feeds into the work orders item up above on the sheet there is that this is the software piece of it, and that is the work that the software tells folks to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then our last one is assessment of the conditions of buildings and that. This is the general funded portion of our maintenance techs giving that information into our FICA systems. Our experts are our site facility coordinators and our maintenance techs, and we take that information and put it into the FICA system, so that we can prioritize needs, as well as safety issues throughout the district. And with having so many sites, it's a way for us to create an efficiency to do that work.
Okay. And certainly, that fed into our capital plan that was presented to the voters. We had to, we had to do all of that work to understand what repairs were needed, and that will certainly go on into the future.
Yes.
Okay.
The vast majority of this is funded by capital funding under the bond, but we have a certain amount that's general fund, so that's why you had this small portion of it.
Okay. Okay, questions? Okay, great. Now we're into transportation. Thank you very much, and again, thank you to your staff for making our school district as above standard as it can be, under the circumstances. I know they work really hard, and we appreciate it.
So I'll go ahead and get started again. So Rick Martin, our Transportation Director, and Scott Lee, our Deputy Director, will discuss with you the four quartile four and the four quartile three budget reduction options. Just a couple overview comments by me. Transportation Department consists of 433 positions, including 297 driver allocations, and 47 transportation aids, predominantly for special education students. The routes these drivers cover are approximately 55% general education and 45% special education routes, that are mandated by law, that also include English language learners programs and children in transition.
Can I just?
Yes.
You said 45% of the routes are special education routes. Wow.
Correct. And then you add on our special programs, which are ELL, CIT, or Children in Transition and Foster, and, what was the last one? There's one other one, I just went blank on it right now.
Yes, that's okay.
Sorry about that.
Happens to all of us.
Yeah, but that's, those are about, that puts us at about 47%. So, and when you look at our actual costs, the last two years, special needs costs have been comparable to our general education costs in transportation.
And on a per-student basis, that...
That's a very, it's a roughly a cost of about a little over $4,500 versus about $800.
$4,500 a year?
Per student.
Per student.
Per student. Because cross-site transportation, and then obviously, the lower occupancies on the buses and door-to-door transportation. and door-to-door transportation, all of those types of issues.
Wow. And this is for, just for everybody's information, this is for a school district that receives $5,700 a year to educate a student. Okay. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. I just, I'm like you, I just wanted to clarify. So 45% for our special ed students?
Correct.
Which we certainly want, I know that's mandated by law, but we want to do that anyway. That certainly isn't the case. And then you said there's an additional 2% for like CIT?
CIT, Foster.
ELL, Foster and some other program you couldn't quite remember.
Yeah, I still can't remember.
That's okay. That's another 2%. So that's a total of about 47%.
About half.
And those, yeah, most of them, and those, if you put all of them together, have an approximate average cost per student of about $4,500?
Roughly.
And I understand, like you said, door-to-door. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that. Wow.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a very expensive cost for, for the transportation and it's a valued transportation.
Absolutely.
That we should be providing and are mandated to provide.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we certainly want it, but I didn't know the numbers were such. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you both for providing that context for us. It's really helpful for us to understand that.
Couple other things I just want to, as far as context is because with many of our operational departments, I think it's really important to notice or to state that transportation is facing a severe worker shortage. And so I want to be clear with our staff and with the public that we are not eliminating driver positions. I have said to our staff many times that we are not eliminating your position. In fact, if you have aunts, uncles, cousins or nephews who are interested in driving, please come see us. So exactly, we are recruiting. And I really want to thank HR in that because they have really been a great partner in helping us to try to recruit more drivers into our district. So we currently have 20 open driver allocations along with an additional 16 that are on leaves of absence, along with four staff positions that are used to drive when needed. We are currently down approximately 40 positions that can drive our buses on a daily basis. So if at the end of this process you, you choose to eliminate transportation routes, we still have plenty of things to do for our staff. So we are definitely not reducing our driver allocations. And as I've mentioned to you before, approximately 40% of our administrative staff in the transportation department are currently driving daily routes in addition to trying to do their normal job. So the bottom line is we need more drivers. So with that, I'll turn this over to go through the...
How many routes do we have that are not the 47%?
Generally, that is about 160, was it 156?
Roughly 160 routes.
Right.
And that's, and that's covering how much geography?
Well, that's covering, what do we have? 60,000 square miles?
6,000, yes.
Yes, 6,000.
6,000 square miles. It would be interesting to know the, the road miles that we have to travel for sure.
Well, we, we travel annually about 5 million miles annually on transportation. So from that standpoint.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And we kind of keep Gerlach out of that because it's a little longer.
But incline. We do have incline.
Yeah. Yeah, we have incline, we have natchez, we have, you know, we're varied from where we are, all over the place, so.
Okay.
So quartile four, we're going to split that up between myself and Mr. Lee, who is my Assistant Director, and for the record, Rick Martin, Transportation Director. He's going to handle the nuts and bolts side and I'm going to handle the aspect of just some of the programs. So the charter bus program, what that is, is hit quartile four is the elimination of the charter bus services for athletic trips. What that entails is any athletic trip that is outside of 150 mile or 125 mile distance that we can't provide that because it's so, say, we've got Sparks High School going up to Elko. In order for us to transport, that takes two drivers. We can't afford to lose two drivers. So a charter service does that and it's based on qualified times, federal law, a number of different things. So it affects us a lot if we send them out on that. So those services are provided for those types of league functions that are outside of, you know, say Churchill County, going to Douglas, going to Carson City, even as far as Love Lock. We can, we can accommodate those, but when we start getting to Winemucca, Austin, some of those other areas, it becomes a situation of labor for us.
But if we, if we eliminated the charter service, we wouldn't be able to send teams to this?
No, that would be the case. It would either be taking services from us, which we can't, we just don't have the opportunity to do that, or we wouldn't be able to provide that transportation and other services that have to be found one way or the other. Next item was...
Oh, I'm sorry. Trusty Caudill?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to mention about that. So everyone knows, I mean, we have two schools that are in, that are Level 3, North Valleys and Sparks, and so their league opponents are Elko. And so we would have to, they would have to change leagues and, which might not be great for those schools since they are 3A. So that's something we have to, we have to consider.
Yeah.
Right. Next item is the transportation for Head Start. Again, that's a situ... Oh, that was, I'm sorry. Going down the list. I'll turn that over to Mr. Lee for the emergency lighting and graphics.
Maybe.
Okay, there you are.
There we go. Scott Lee, for the record, Assistant Director. The emergency lighting and graphics program primarily applies to school police. A very small portion is roughly $2,000 is vendoring out for vehicle graphics and the like for emergency vehicles. The rest is outfitting school police vehicles, installing the light bars, installing the radios, the cages, the strobe lights, all of the accessories and equipment.
Do we take advantage of state purchasing with other law enforcement agencies to get the cost of that minimized?
I believe we do. I would have to ask our fleet manager as far as the actual equipment that is installed. I know we do with the vehicles.
Okay. And I know we save a few bucks if we do all white vehicles, but it's not very much to not paint them as, you know, police vehicles. Okay? Okay, thanks.
My turn. The Head Start program, that's transportation that is cross zone transportation for students going from door-to-door in this situation to Head Start programs that are affiliated with certain schools that we have in the district, Cannon, Matthews, a couple of other elementaries. It's not a mandated program. It's just a program that was implemented years back and has been just been going for years. Again, it's cross zone, so that's why it's expensive. Door-to-door is also expensive because you go into neighborhoods and just currently it's 27 students that we're transporting.
For $187,000?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, for 187. And that includes some other variables with administration and things like that.
Wow. Uber.
Yep. That was mentioned.
27 students?
27.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Is it, so it's only 27 students? That's not all of the students in Head Start?
No, it's not all the students. It's only 27 students that we're transporting for the, for certain aspects.
Are they requesting it or we, how does that process work?
It comes through from a request through our...
Family resource center?
Yeah, family and just overall program that was established years back and...
So there's a possibility that maybe we could direct them to another way?
Correct. There could be, as I said, some of these are, you know, be cross zone transportation. There could be other Head Start programs that could be closer. Could be some other aspects of service that we could be looking at if there's a requirement from a standpoint of meeting a special need aspect or some kind of 504 request or something that we could possibly work with in lieu of transportation paying them for cost to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Last was on quartile four was the elimination or reduction of the athletics program for transportation of that. And that cost there is primarily in town or within that 100 to 125 mile radius. So we're talking, as I said, going out to Fallon or possibly Love Lock, Douglas, Carson City, some of those, all of our transportation in town. And it also includes transportation for middle school athletics as well. So that's the primary cost on that. From the standpoint of fees collected, it's about $185,000 that we collect in fees from students for that annually and our cost is still the 1.1 million, so.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Who, I'm sorry.
No, you go first.
Okay. Thank you. So the 185 that we do collect, is that, is that applied to each student, each school or how is that applied? Where does that come from?
My understanding is it is applied to each student at the school that paid the fee, which is a one-time fee. So for high schools, it's $35, for middle schools, it's $5. And so that goes to business, business then allocates it accordingly, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Vice President Raymond?
Thank you. My concern here, I guess, is because we actually heard, I think, at a lot of the forums about increasing the fee too, but it seems to me that this would become an equity issue and also even with the charter bus programs that you could have schools that could easily raise the funds through a booster club and other schools that couldn't. And then how does that work? We just, there would be some schools that participate and some that don't?
Correct. That would be the issue that you would normally find in those circumstances with equity is that certain schools couldn't, wouldn't be able to do that even with fundraisers isn't likely. They probably wouldn't be able to produce enough or you have other schools who would produce more than enough. So it does have that, that piece to it that makes it difficult to maintain that consistency for all of our schools just based on their economic status and the like, so.
When was the last time we raised those fees?
Five years ago. We went from 25 to 35 for the high school and we actually did, at that point, started charging the middle school for five.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Quartile three is, I guess, oh, you already did it for me. Thank you. Bus car wash, what that is, is basically we incorporate a cost of an hour a week into all of our driver salaries so that they can wash and clean the bus once a week. So they do that. We have a wash station at the central yard and then the peripheral yards have access to a couple of vendor, outside vendors that we can use and they, they go in and wash the buses there. And that provides basically the, a few things. One, it maintains the cleanliness of the bus, working with them, working on the interior of the bus as well so that we can work with viral infections as well as they have in the schools because you've got 80 kids on a bus or 60 kids on a bus and, and you have somebody who's sick. It can, it can, it can spread. So obviously there's the disinfecting pieces and all of that that they have to provide for that. Also, it keeps up the appearance of our fleet, so, which also maintains the longevity of our fleet in that way as well. I'm going to turn the next item over to Mr. Lee.
The next item is our propane gas program and this is management of our propane sites at our central yard and our north yard. It includes the card reader, the administrative costs, the annual fees and just running the system.
Okay.
Okay, our school within a school transportation is roughly, we provide that for four schools, which are Collin Ranch, Gom Elementary, Whitehead Elementary and Hunsburger Elementary. And that's the only transportation we provide for any of the gifted and talented programs. That is currently 119 students that we transport and the, the cost on that, you see the discrepancy between that and Head Start is that when we pick up these students, we pick them up at their zone school. So we're not going into neighborhoods and like, and so we can pick up more students at one spot and then we drop them back off at that spot and the parents are responsible for getting them to and from home at that point. We also have, some of those situations, we have some very long rides for those students. The Collin Ranch school is, I think the first student we pick up is back in the Cold Springs area and that is an hour and 30 minutes for transportation for them. So it's a long drive to and from. But again, where the zones are, or where the schools are located, where the programs are, that's what we have to do to provide for that. So that is, that is a cost to us. It's not mandated, but it is something that we've provided for many, many years.
If I may?
Yes.
So just looking at this in the, in the same context, so we, we are spending $784,000 for 119 students? Am I reading that correctly?
$250,000.
Okay, because it says, it says the total cost is 784.
I, I think that was in the original priority budgeting piece when they were putting together that, those numbers and we had to keep adding a certain percentage to a certain qualifier and that kept raising it up. But the actual cost that we have is really $250,000. It's not seven, not 784.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to say, wow, we'll buy them cars.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking I would go Uber, but...
It's illegal to Uber kids, unfortunately.
So, so from that standpoint...
A lot of parents do it.
Yeah.
I know. That's why they say it's illegal. I know they do.
Yeah, again, Pete, that's our Chief Operating Officer. That's a really good catch and you're right. I was looking at my notes here. That was 784 was based on a 10% allocation, which we found was to be incorrect. So the real number is $250,000, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the last one. One more question, yes?
I'm sorry, it's not a question, but a comment and it's the same one that I had before, I guess, sort of, but I just, I look at the transportation for this program and I think about the equity of the program. I mean, it is expensive, but I was at Collin Ranch in the classroom and talked with some of the students and they had efficiencies for the route to get to the, to get to school in the morning instead of turning down this street, go that way. But, but, you know, there are students that are zoned for a school that, you know, I know to be in a neighborhood that is not the same as the Collin Ranch neighborhood and I think it's important that we offer the opportunity where their parents might not have the ability to drive them to the program.
Right.
Sorry. That was not very well said.
And we understand that and from the standpoint of just as we were filling these things out, it came into the quartile.
I apologize. I shouldn't have directed it to you as much as just my feelings about it and I appreciate everything that you guys had to do to come up with these lists. So thank you. I'm sorry.
No, and it's, it's a great question and it came up frequently and in fact, it did come up from parents of SWAS kids. So, you know, it's something we have to, we have to think about. And yes, you're right. This again goes to, you know, how do we make sure that it's every child by name and face to graduation? And that means even if it's a child that has to ride an hour and a half on the bus, you know, to get to a SWAS program. I know that, you know, this works a lot with academics as well to understand what's the ideal location for our SWAS programs and, and how do we balance the use of facilities and overcrowding issues and all of those things? Enrollments at various schools. So I know a lot goes into it, but I, I do want to acknowledge that even parents whose kids benefit from it had said, maybe this is something we could help with, so. It's a tough one. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. In, in many cases, you're right, yeah.
And for the last item, again, I'm turning this over to Mr. Lee.
The last item is vehicle and equipment asset disposal. So when we have a school bus or a police car or something like that, we don't just send it to auction as, it has thousands of dollars worth of equipment on there. Diesel fire preheaters, radios, cages, lights, in addition to other items that we may regularly use, cross arm, cross arms, stop arms, mirrors, regular parts. So what we do is we strip those out of that vehicle, make sure it's got old tires on it and then ship it out before, basically we try to salvage every usable part off of it before we send it away. So that's very labor intensive, but it does save us on the acquisition side for buying parts. When we're dealing with grants, specific grants, that disposal takes a lot longer. We have to document everything. We have to drill holes in the engine. We have to drain all of the fluids. We have to tow the vehicle to the scrapyard and either film or take pictures of it being destroyed.
Wow.
So it's, it can be very labor intensive.
Wow. Thanks for, for explaining that. That's, that's, that's pretty difficult. Okay, questions?
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, so, so the recommendation is that vehicles will, cannot be disposed to auction, it sounds like we do that already?
We, we do that already, yes.
Okay, so there's no, there's not an additional recommendation on this? Okay, okay, thank you. And great, thank you for doing that, that's gotta be big hassle, but it saves us money.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and again, thank you so much for what you and your staffs do for our children and for our families and our staff, appreciate it. We have public comments, okay? JJ?
Tom Staus.
Tom, you've been waiting patiently. He's in the other room, or is he gone?
He was here.
He was here for a long time.
Yes, he was, that's all.
Okay, well, we'll move on to someone who is here.
Christiane Costa.
Sorry, Madam President.
Welcome, Christiane.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting patiently.
Thank you for listening to me after this long morning of presentations. I would like to address the reduction of elementary middle school magnets, the GT programs that was presented by Ms. Martino and others. We relocated from California to Reno and made sacrifices, split my family, and my husband is in California, we did that because we had two sons that don't fit in the normal curriculum, so you have wonderful programs here that California doesn't have, okay? So I, we have one son attending the Davidson Academy, his needs are math, currently math, and another son at this wonderful program at the Clayton Magnet Middle School, Dr. Saul's an amazing teacher, Ms. Prime, English teacher, also amazing teacher, and he's ha, my son has, he is, he's having his needs, math and education. I want to point out that a reduction of local GT magnets programs, particularly for our family, would mean that our sons, or our son in the public, in the GT magnet, would be basically deprived from inadequate education for him, and, and the other option for us would be pulling him out of school, we've, we've done this in the past with both kids, and having to provide TMCC or UNR, and they would be deprived of the peer interaction, which is very important, not only curriculum is important, especially in the middle school age, and like my son at Clayton Middle School, he is, math level is so high that he doesn't even fit in the gifted magnet program, so I just want to reiterate that gifted students are not just clever students, but they belong to a special category, they have needs for peer, they're, they're same level intellectually, and oftentimes, these students are three to four grades ahead of the curriculum, of the known gifted curriculum, and in one or more subject areas. Cutting GT programs would most possibly mean that these students would not be represented in the curriculum, would not be served, even though the parents pay for the taxes, so it would be taxation without representation or offering. I would just, my last three words, would like to kindly urge the panel, the trustee, the board of trustees, to be open-hearted, open-minded, and give a special consideration when reducing the GT, when considering reducing the GT middle school programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being an engaged and involved parent and being here.
Joseph Silvira?
Joseph, welcome.
Hi, my name is Joseph Silvira, I'm a custodian of Los Alamos, and also a board member for WESP, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, I know there's, you know, budgetary restrictions and financial issues, but I'd also like to point out that the only reason I still work for the district is because I didn't understand the difference between Plan A and Plan B, because at this point, due to financial reasons, if I could leave the district and not have to lose the money that I put into the retirement, I would be trying to get a job with the Postal Service or the VA, just because even though I've been in the district for three years, the custodial pay is so low, moving over to one of those, a different job, with like the Postal Service, would actually be an increase in my wages, substantial if it was something like the VA. The reason I bring this up is whenever I try getting any of my additional friends to work for the school district, they've seen my paycheck, you know, I, I don't hide that kind of stuff, and every single one looks at it and goes, it's just not worth it, you know, I can make two to three dollars more going through a temp agency doing less work, and that's my main concern, I just want to bring that up, let that be known.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, and we appreciate your service, Joe.
Shivani?
Welcome, and thank you for bringing your sidekick.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Shivani, and with respect to all the board members present here, I have a question. My daughter is in, is profoundly gifted, and currently she is in third grade SWAS program in Collin Ranch Elementary. I was notified, she topped the, the test, which was, which she gave to get into this program, so she, right now she must be enjoying her science project with her peers in her SWAS program, so what I want to know, like if the GT proposed cuts put into place, and kids have to come on the waiting list, or the lottery system come into place, then how the school district will justify the effect it will have on the future of my daughter or the other kids who are in the same program, SWAS, or like magnet, or any other, like profoundly gifted kids? So I would, at the end, I would just like to say that whatever decision you guys make, please keep in mind the future of our kids, especially the ones who have the talent to maybe go to, go beyond the boundaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, we appreciate it, thanks for being an involved parent. Do we have any other?
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, is there anyone else who's here or in the other room that would like to speak to us at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board, is there any closing remarks you wanted to make, Mr. Mathers or Mr. Schroeder, or, okay, board members, questions or comments? Okay, well, we have a very, very difficult set of choices ahead of us, we are very grateful for all of the work that the staff has done to go through every single one of more than seven hundred programs, to determine what, what efficiencies we can find, what other resources we can use, and really look creatively and out of the box at, at what we do. So thank you to everybody for this very, very daunting task. Again, we are not making decisions today, but I think we've seen some things that perhaps do rise to the top of, of items that might have to be considered, and in some cases, we've seen departments that have already taken those actions, so we appreciate that, but we have some very, very tough work ahead of us, and I just want to thank my colleagues on the board for their attention all day, it's a tough process, and again, thank you to all the staff and department heads. Budget timeline is on the screen ahead of us, in front of us, and that, that is also daunting, you've heard our challenges of having to complete a balanced budget by law, and its absolute last date is June eighth, and of course, the legislature will be making decisions probably about that week, and we will already have had to make our decisions. As you'll note, if we have a legislative session that produces some changes to our budget, we do have the authority under law to come back and revise the budget, so I want folks to understand, even though we have to make these difficult choices, and they are terrible, as I've said to several folks, every single expenditure the district makes has a constituency, it has someone that cares about it, that, that it has something that impacts other things, either within the district, or it impacts students, or it impacts the community, so there are no easy choices here, but even with having to make them in our balanced budget by no later than June eighth, we will still have an opportunity, if things change, to come back later, so hopefully, many of you who have concerns will advocate at the legislature, as we try to do, to ensure that Nevada students get better funding to the base, to be able to provide a better educational system for them. Any other comments from board members? Okay, and there's no further public comment, so with that, we will adjourn the work session, and I'd like to ask that we, we start our next regular meeting at two fifteen, so that we give board and staff at least a half hour to take care of business. Superintendent, did you have a comment?
Hi, do not.
Okay, all right, we'll see everybody who needs to be back at two fifteen, is that okay with you all? Okay.